Good afternoon, welcome to the April Work Session of the Cobb School Board. I would like to ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you, and now, Mr. Doyle, do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Chairman, we have 12 speakers today.
All right, two minutes apiece.
Okay, our first speaker is Lucia Yodzo. And she's going to be followed by Rachel Levine, she's going to talk about Campbell Middle School.
Hello, my name is Lucy, I am a 7th grader from Campbell Middle School, and I'm here to talk about a couple of problems at our school that needs to be fixed. The carpets and floors in some of our classrooms are buckling and smelling horrible due to ceiling leaks. In our homeroom class, the carpet smells disgusting, and it makes it hard for us to concentrate in the morning. We have asked other students how they feel about the smell, and they say that they hate it and it's distracting. We cannot concentrate. If the first thing you smell when you walk into the school is mildew carpet, I think that you'll find it pretty hard to want to stay in the classroom and learn. This can also be dangerous to some kids' health. Students with asthma could have an attack in the middle of class because of the mold on the carpet. Black mold can also create, due to the mold, which can also lead to other health issues. The roads outside of our school have also been severely damaged. Major potholes decorate the roads where students walk often. They fill with water and cause students to have to go around the pothole or into the mud or grass just to get away from the pothole. And now, Rachel Levine will talk about other problems at our school.
Our next speaker is Rachel Levine, who will discuss Campbell Middle School. She'll be followed by Kiara Murphy.
Hi, my name is Rachel Levine, and I'm also a 7th grader at Campbell Middle School. The gym floors at our school are also suffering from water coming from our ceilings. The wood is buckling at the walls and creating safety hazards for students. If they're playing basketball or soccer, they could trip over the buckled floor and injure themselves. We've had reports of kids tripping and falling on the gym floor while engaging in the sports activities. It's been so severe that a student almost broke their arm. These problems are embarrassing, and they make it difficult for kids to want to come back to school. Nobody in our first period wants to come to school in the morning and be greeted by an ugly stench from the carpets. So we are asking that you consider these problems and hopefully put our school into the new budget plan to fix these problems so that we can be proud of our school again. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Kiara Murphy, who will discuss Campbell Middle School, followed by Carolyn Wong.
Hello, my name is Kiara Murphy, I'm a 7th grader at Campbell Middle School. I would like to discuss the conditions of the restrooms at our school. There is paint peeling off the ceiling due to water damage. The paint on the walls are old, dark, and dirty. It has not been replaced in years. In addition, the sinks do not work properly. When you push the top of the faucet, it is supposed to release the water, but it does not work, so you have to hold one hand on top while washing the other hand. This poses as a sanitation issue for our fellow Spartans. There are also stalls in various locations around the schools that have missing locks. We only have one restroom for all the 7th grade, which is approximately 500 students sharing a tiny restroom each day. Personally, I have heard many students discuss how they avoid using the restroom at our school because of their horrible conditions. No student should have to compromise their health because the bathrooms at our school are not functionable. Thank you for listening, and now my friend Carolyn is going to talk about some other areas in our school.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Wong, who'll discuss Campbell Middle School, followed by Irene Wong.
Good afternoon, my name is Carolyn Wong, and I am currently a 7th grade student here attending Campbell Middle School. Today, I would like to inform you about a major issue that students come across every day. To begin, there are various amounts of peeled-off ceilings, as well as ceilings that have leaks and holes throughout the entire school. You can find these problems in the media center, gym, bathroom, classrooms, hallways, and the list goes on. This majorly affects the carpet in classrooms. For example, in my homeroom and first-period class, there is buckling carpet and messed up and exposed wires, all due to leaking water from the ceiling. In our lower gym, you can see all different shades of the floor. One color is the original gym floor, the other color, the lighter one, is the new gym floor, and there is one more that is the new gym floor, but still has been affected by water still leaking from the ceilings. And not to mention, the giant holes in our gym ceilings allow rodent creatures to enter into our school. For instance, during a 7th grade school dance, a rat fell from the ceiling. And this is not the first time it's happened, it has actually happened several other times. Additionally, according to PE and students and coaches, due to huge holes in the ceilings, there have been tons of balls kicked up into the ceilings and not returned back down. Meaning, our school must spend money on gym equipment for students to use. So if you fund money for our school ceilings, it would help a lot. To continue, there are several trashcans in the middle-
30 seconds.
In the end, please take note that, as you're building new schools, just remember the 1,581 students who are attending Campbell Middle School right now, under these conditions.
Our next speaker is Irene Wong, who will discuss Campbell Middle School building concerns, followed by Toni Waybright.
Good afternoon. My name is Irene Wong, and I'm a parent of a Campbell Middle School student, and I serve on the school council. Campbell Middle School is now the largest middle school in Cobb County, and one of our older school buildings, and the building shows its age. The school needs basic upkeep and maintenance that has not been done over the years. You've heard examples about how the roof needs to be replaced. We know the replacement roof is in Splotz 5, and we hope that you can find the funds to fix it as soon as possible. We're grateful for the work that was completed in Splotz 4, but there were four major projects that were identified as needs for Campbell Middle School in 2012 in the Splotz 4 notebook that were not completed. One, the repaving of the car, bus, drive, and fire lanes. Two, a flooring replacement of the classrooms in the old building, including the hallways and new carpet. And three, replacing the auditorium seats in the outdated theater. I know you're making budgetary decisions, and we want you to know that the highest priority for our school is the replacement of the damaged flooring and carpet that is needed in at least 18 classrooms used by 6th, 7th, and some 8th grade classes. I have distributed pictures of the carpet in these classrooms from the original part of Campbell Middle School, the former high school. These carpets are warped, buckling, badly discolored from stains of years of water damage and other damage.
30 seconds.
What I cannot communicate is the foul odor of these carpets, and the stink of the mildew and the decay. Teachers are running air fresheners all day long, and it still smells. So we hope that you can find the funds to invest and repair the damage in our school and just invest in the maintenance of our school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Toni Waybright, who will discuss Campbell High School in Splotz, and he will be followed by Stacy Dax.
Good afternoon. Campbell High School is the largest high school in Cobb, with the largest magnet program in Cobb, and just minutes away from the largest employment center in Cobb County. We're tired of our students going to school in middle-school classrooms from the 60s, and the others in classrooms not much better. We need Class 8 classrooms for our school, not new gyms and new theaters. We're glad Splotz 5 is bringing some relief, but we need to get beyond doing the bare minimum. One half of our building has sat facing Powder Springs Street, as it is since it was built in the 60s. It still says "FT Wills" on the outside wall. We can no longer pile pine straw high enough on cleanup day to hide the 60 years of inattention. We want to have a great facility and a great school district in the premier economic area of Cobb County, so that the Cobb Chamber only has to drive five minutes to take visitors on a school tour, instead of driving 20 minutes to Wheeler or 25 minutes to Walton. We want to host a district meeting one day like Walton did before Splotz, and have someone from CCSD Leadership start the meeting by saying how great the school looks as he drove up, and how inspiring a place it must be for students to come and learn every day. With that said, we do want to say thank you for some of the progress that has been made. We appreciate the work to improve the interior circulation in the school so students can move safely around the school. We appreciate expanding the cafeteria and learning commons, and need to continue doing that to match our projected enrollment. We appreciate removing redistricting from our conversation. We also hope that finally we can continue to provide equity by planning classrooms for every one of our students on our projected enrollment, and leave a few extra for Mr. Ragsdale's proposed extra allotments, so that we can take advantage of those new teachers. High schools are the flagship of our communities, and every community deserves a great high school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stacy Dax, who will discuss Campbell High School, followed by Michelle Picard.
Good afternoon. Before, during, and after Splotz 5, staff and board members promised attention to Campbell's support spaces like the cafeteria, food service, learning commons, and parking. It has taken over a year of hard work from our administration and school council since the first concept proposed by the architects failed to include these improvements. Thankfully, the current draft design will provide some of these long-needed improvements, but it is not yet adequate. In each area, we only seek the same amount of space and resources per student as other high schools in the district. We have so little space in our cafeteria that we have to have five lunch periods instead of four like other schools. That shortens lunch to 23 minutes. Bear with me, because I'm going to do a little simple math with you. According to the first quarter Food Services Report, Campbell serves an average of 1,229 lunches per day. Divide that by our five periods, it's 246 lunches per period. Divided by our five lunch lines, it's 49 lunches per line. If one student clears the line every 30 seconds, faster than SunTrust Park concessions, it takes 24 and 1/2 minutes just to serve each student. But the lunch period is only 23 minutes. The proposed 20% increase in serving lines from 5 to 6 appears overdue based on our current enrollment of almost 3,000 students. We would like you to consider adding a 7th line in order to accommodate projected enrollment increases, while still maintaining four lunch segments like other similarly sized schools.
30 seconds.
For example, North Cobb, which has roughly 2,800 students, has at least eight serving lines between the Freshman Academy cafeteria and the main cafeteria with 29-minute lunch segments. As another example, serving stations at the North Cobb Freshman Academy serve a maximum of 58 students each, while current Campbell serving stations serve twice as many students with a maximum of 116 students. We also believe the cafeteria needs to be expanded to accommodate expected growth that allows for a return to four lunch periods from five and a reasonable amount of time for students to both purchase and eat lunch. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Michelle Picard, who will discuss renovations to Campbell, and she'll be followed by Marie Stockton.
Good afternoon. I have twins in the Campbell-Ivy program. I currently serve on the Campbell High School Council, and my husband and I are both proud alumni of King Springs, Griffin, and Campbell. I'm deeply invested, and supporting our schools is deeply personal for me. 50 years ago, the King Springs District was in such high demand that my parents bought a house sight unseen as they carefully planned where to raise a family. We watched the counterclockwise development throughout Cobb, watched as Smyrna got left behind, and then watched with excitement as the cycle started over again and Smyrna's resurgence began. 20 years ago, my husband and I moved back home for the same reasons that attracted my parents, only the school buildings looked just the same as when my parents arrived, except for the occasional Frankenstein bolt-ons over the decades. We know that a book shouldn't be judged by its cover, but we also know that's exactly what happens. What will be our new main entrance off Powder Springs Street desperately needs more than just new windows and doors. It's past time for a significant facelift and a digital marquee to set a new 21st century tone. While we prefer the new entrance to reflect the world-class leadership and academics behind the doors, we would at least like to see a front entrance that reflects the considerable investment being made within the school, as well as consistency with the district's new and improved standards for facades. First impressions and equity matter. Most schools across the district look like state-of-the-art conference centers, while Campbell looks more like an abandoned 1960s strip mall. Y'all come see us, give us a visit, and thank you, Mr. Scamahorn, for visiting this week. And when you drive up, think about the impression that book cover makes. Think about how students like my daughter feel when her soccer team rolls up to a school across the county, and the coach on more than one occasion has had to ask the team to quote, "Close your mouths and pretend like you've seen a nice-looking school before." High schools are the flagship of each community, and every community deserves a facility of which they can be proud. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marie Stockton, who will discuss needs at Campbell High School, followed by Dr. Rosemary Vaughn.
Good afternoon. I too am a 20-year Cobb County resident and active in the public school system, as I have raised my children through King Springs, Griffin, and Campbell High School, serving on Foundation, Council, PTA at King Springs. I came to the school board seven years ago and begged, begged, for you all to put trailers on our campus as our enrollment continued to exceed what could be held in our buildings. That was seven years ago. And I realized then that our processes are broken. They are reactive, not proactive. And at that point in time, I decided to start planning for what needed to be happening in our community, knowing that this was never about my children. I mean, I took the break today from helping my child with the college application process to come here because I'm vested in our community. It's been going on for a long time. So my ask for you as a school board is to think about and evaluate the processes that are being used as you move towards your mission of student success. Timeliness. Seven years we've been working on these problems and are in a no-different situation. Data gathering. I ask that you don't just look at demographers and architects. I ask that you look at money's report that Smyrna is a top 50 place to live in this country, that you consider the fact that I'm in a church congregation that just paid $1 million for additional parking lot space because we're busting at the seams, that I volunteer on a swim team that is the largest recreational team in Cobb County. There are families that want their children in our schools, and you can't judge a book by a cover because I'm so proud of what's coming out of Campbell from education standpoint, but I ask that you evaluate these processes. And I also ask that you consider input from students like this who spoke and other parents, so that you can really understand what's happening in our schools. Again, despite the conditions at the school, I'm still very proud of all the accomplishments that are happening at Campbell and what you guys are doing, but I implore you to really take a look at processes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Rosemary Vaughn, who will discuss pay raise for teachers, and she'll be followed by Mark Chastain.
Good afternoon, I am here on behalf of Educators First, and we would just like to take a moment to thank you for all of your hard work. We know you face many challenges and you have to address many different issues, but we would like to acknowledge publicly all of the awards that this district has won. And every time I go to the website, it is thrilling to see all that our students are doing and that you are doing as a board and on behalf of our students. So we just thank you for that. We are here today, we're interested in hearing about the pay raise upcoming for teachers, and we are hoping that that will be passed on to them, and we just thank you again for all that you do.
Our next speaker is Mark Chastain. He will discuss the Center for Family Resources, and he'll be followed by our final speaker, Joy Dos.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Chastain, and this is Joy Dos. We volunteer with the Center for Family Resources. For 59 years, we've been serving low-income families all across Cobb County. Over the last 30 years, we've been providing a program called Thanks For Giving. Thanks For Giving provides food for low-income families all across Cobb County, and we're thankful and grateful for your partnership in helping us serve this need for the whole week, so families can have a Thanksgiving tradition of their own.
As a Cobb County student and product of the amazing schools at Cobb County, I'm proud to report to you the amazing community service that your schools are performing. We had 37 Cobb County schools participate in our food drive this year. It was amazing. They collected a total of 33,000 food items for these families in need. And as a result, we were able to feed 756 Cobb County families a Thanksgiving meal along with food for the entire week, which, as you know, is really important for our students who are reliant on free and reduced lunch. In that amount, we were able to serve 1,700 children, which, these are Cobb County students that we were able to serve. So we're very grateful for that. But I wanted to specifically mention a few schools who went above and beyond. Harrison High School was our third-place donator. Then next with Chatham Hill Elementary School, and finally, Ford Elementary School. And I want to brag on them just briefly. They raised over 11,000 food items,
30 seconds.
Which is over 1/3 of what was collected total. So we're extremely thankful for all of Cobb County schools. We couldn't do it without you. We literally couldn't do it without you. So we're very grateful that you partner with us, and we look forward to this next year and the participation of your schools. Thank you so much.
I want to thank all of our public speakers, and thank you for all that CFR does in our community to help our families. And let me, Jerry Barr, would you mind standing up? This is the year of Jerry's retirement. We want to thank you for your leadership and what you've done, and your legacy. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Banks?
We've heard some, I think, I would consider some action items for the superintendent, and I would like for the superintendent to, in the next board meeting, to come back to us and tell us an update of these items.
Okay, Mr. Banks, would you send me an email specifically of what you'd like, and we'll-
Well, some of the things that were discussed.
Clearing an email for Agenda Prep, please, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, I also want to say I have some attachments, I think, related to some of the comments. I think they're all, it's three folders. I think they all go together, I'm just going to pass these around. Keep the three folders together, and throughout the meeting, board members can take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the approval of the minutes from the Thursday, March 21st, 2019 Board Minutes. If there is no objection, all right, the minutes are approved. And next, we have the Board Agenda Items from Mr. Ragsdale, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Agenda item number one is the monthly recurring item for authorization to dispose of school properties. Per District Administrative Rule DO-R, that list has been sent electronically. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Dr. Howard?
Thank you so much. I just want to make sure there's nothing out of the ordinary on this agenda item. I know we do it every month, but I love to just know from your review and your team's review that there's nothing out of the ordinary from these items.
No, the items that are on this list are either beyond repair or out of warranty, or both.
All right, thank you, all right, consent? All right, number two.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to ask you, Mr. John Adams, to bring the next two agenda items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board. It's my pleasure to bring you a recommendation for approval toward a contract for King Springs Elementary School replacement. In accordance with Splotz 5, King Springs is scheduled to receive a replacement school. Awarding the contract at this time will allow the project to remain on schedule, with a scheduled substantial completion date of May of 2020. Obviously, be ready for the fall of that year. We received two proposals for this project. We recommend that the award goes to Balfour Beatty Construction out of Atlanta, Georgia, in the amount you see there, $31.99 million as budgeted out of Splotz 5. And proceeding with this award will allow us to remain on schedule. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Adams, could you tell us what the IU's are for this school?
Yes, sir, and currently, I'm going to give you a number that encompasses both schools that are currently split. But currently, 60 IU's, and we'll be building it for 67. We are building this as large as we can build it on a very tight space, three stories. So 67 in the new school.
Okay, thank you. All right, Dr. Howard?
Thank you so much. Can you speak to enrollment projections that you're aware of, and kind of how this solution addresses our concerns for overcrowding at King Springs Elementary?
Yes, sir, as I said, we're building it as large as we can physically build it, and we are building it to house our anticipated enrollment. You'll hear more from that in the next month or two. But we are building it to meet our anticipated enrollment needs.
Can you give a little more specifics on "meet"? Are we thinking we're close, we'll probably open at capacity, maybe a little more? If you had to, I know we don't have all the information at this point, but if you can just give us a little bit of a-
I think we'll be right on target, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,100. There is, we've seen this with prior schools, there's somewhat of a "build it and they'll become" phenomenon. So we anticipate a little bit of that. But we're building it at the capacity we think is going to be necessary, and then we have backup plans if we have to get to that.
Let me jump in as well, because there seems to be a lot of hyper-attention to numbers. And for obvious reasons, because you get the wrong numbers out there, and you start making decisions on incorrect data, then that is, that's a very bad decision-making ability. So let me go back and rewind to Smyrna. When we built Smyrna Elementary School, and it's never the intention to build it to open at capacity, ever. That's never the intention. Smyrna Elementary School was built to have 100-student room for growth. Within a year, that was filled. I don't think, you know, anybody did, to John's point, the "build it, they will come." Everybody wants to come to the new school. And so there was a lot of attraction. You know, the condominiums, for lack of a better term, that are built right beside there, you know, it was termed that, oh my gosh, those will, you know, those are for young professionals with no kids. There will never be any kids there, ever, don't worry about it. And best I can tell, kids are the only ones that ride tricycles about this house, which are in the yards and the driveways. So we do make the decision based on the best data that we have available. But I do want to say, we don't ever design a school to only fit the capacity for what today is. That's just not good decision-making. And we would not be good stewards of taxpayer dollars if we did that. The flip side of that is also true, and we can't build a school with, you know, 15%, 20% capacity that's open, thinking that it will be filled, and then it doesn't, and then that spirals you into a redistricting kind of scenario. So I do want to say and make sure that everyone understands, we do not design schools to fit the capacity of today. Now, we also don't look at data at 10 years, because that's not actionable data. Data at five years- look at data at 10 years, because that's not actionable data. Data at five years is actionable, but past three years is questionable. But we do use five-year data when we're doing the design, which, as you know, we discussed, we're finalizing that design for Campbell High School, and the numbers are changing, based on the latest demographic information that we're getting. That's why we've chosen to update the demographic study each year instead of on a five-year basis, because you're at the end of a five-year study, and you're using five-year data to make decisions for five years from now, you're using 10-year data. So that being said, I just want to say that, you know, for informational purposes for everybody, because as parents are looking at the schools that their schools are either are attending or will be attending, that's a concern, and rightfully so. So I want to go ahead and say, just point blank, we do not conduct a design, we do not produce a design that is going to be at capacity when opened. Now, again, you know, this was before I was doing construction, in the least, but Smyrna, you know, 100-student capacity at the time was deemed appropriate. Looking back, I mean, you know, you have to base it on the data you had, not the data you have today. So it is a very difficult decision. I know a lot of other districts, every time, and they're much smaller, obviously, but still, to me, that's not a good decision, is every time they open a new school, they do a total redistricting for the entire county. I never want to get into that situation, even by post, you know, where you have multiple schools. Every time you build a school, you have to redistrict the entire post. I don't necessarily want to get into that either. But at the same time, we got to make sure that we're building for capacity, and we're building for functional capacity in the future. At best, actionable data out to five years. So I just wanted to throw that out there, because, again, in the age of information at your fingertips, I want to make sure that we get the accurate information out there.
Okay. Dr. Howard has a follow-up.
Appreciate that commentary, Mr. Superintendent. Also, a question about just the general plan. You mentioned the kind of concerns of this kind of being landlocked, and right now, King Springs is split into two different campuses. Can you just kind of give a brief overview of what that looks like?
Sure. Right now, they're split in the old Brown building as well. And thank goodness we've had that, because we've had the ability to use it. But we will be reuniting the folks at King Springs on one campus, which I'm sure that they will like, and it will be a three-story building. It is a tight space, but it's the space we have, and so we're building it up as opposed to out, because that's the limitation. Brief note to Mr. Ragsdale's point on IUs, because we don't want to get hung up specifically on IUs, but just to note that our IU is typically about 30% larger in terms of square footage than what the state defines as an IU. So it's not exactly fair to compare apples to oranges when our classrooms are bigger. So just to bear that in mind when we have discussions about IUs.
Also, too, let me add to that, just for information. Further complicating the design for King Springs at elementary school, and generally for you guys, because we ran into this at Teasley, but at an elementary school, when you start doing multiple stories, correct me if I get my math wrong, but I think it's K1 and 2 have to be on a ground-level exit. So as you're designing that, you know, if it's going to be three stories, you got to make sure that you work the building in like at Teasley. You know, we had to do that for K, is it K1 and 2 or K1?
I believe they're currently K1.
Okay. I said I could be wrong. So, but at least two grade levels that I know of have to be on ground-level exits, and that further complicates when you have a tight, landlocked area like King Springs, making sure that we do have that growth that we have to keep in mind. You know, when you say, okay, we're going to have X amount of growth capacity, if you're saying you want X amount of growth capacity at K1, then you got to make sure that design incorporates that, because you can't have that option of going up to a non-ground-level exit.
Just one comment in appreciation for the team. We could very easily not have enough land to build it all, and which we would be looking for real estate in a place that's very difficult to find real estate for anything, let alone another elementary school. And I think that it's a benefit to the district that we were able to save on having to find more real estate for a new elementary school, but we can use very creatively, I may add, the existing land that we have. So I just wanted to thank the team for, and the designers, for being able to come up with the solution. Of course, we always want a perfect scenario, but, I mean, they're working some magic with this one, and I just wanted to say thank you for the team working on that.
Thank you, sir. It's going to be a great result.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Mr. Wheeler has a question, but before you ask, don't lose your thought. I want to thank Mr. Wheeler. Last month, I was sitting here, and I was just kind of percolating on the inside. I didn't know what was going, and I will tell you, at lunchtime that day, I bought a 24-hour cold remedy. It only lasted about four and a half hours. And so I had to vacate, and Mr. Wheeler took over and did a fine job, and I want to say thank you. Now, your question, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chastain. Good to see you healthy, wealthy, and wise. Mr. Howard was talking about finding land in Smyrna. It's obvious, if you drive through that part of the county, that there's been a lot of growth and redevelopment and things. I'm just curious, does the district get input from the city of Smyrna on their plans and rezonings, and what they're, they just create these things, and there's no land for these things? I mean, but they go ahead and, I don't know. What, I'm asking, does, what kind of input do we get from the city of Smyrna?
We have an excellent relationship with the city, and with all the cities with whom we work, and the county. And we try to coordinate as much as possible with them. I'd say our relationship with the city of Smyrna is especially good, because of proximity and because it goes back a pretty long way. To your point, they're not making any more land in Cobb County, and especially not usable land. If I'd have known 40 years ago, I probably would have told my mom to buy some, but I didn't have the foresight to do that when I was 10. But you'd be amazed, when you find a parcel that you think might be usable, there's either a floodplain, or the utility wires, or there's a gas line, or for some reason, it's not usable. And I think the developers, being smart and good stewards of their capital, have already used the easily convertible land already. So it's tough. But we do have a good relationship with Smyrna, and we try to coordinate with them like we do with all the other jurisdictions. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. We can put on consent. Is that okay? All right. We'll do discussion then. All right. Agenda Item Number Three, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Agenda Item Number Three, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for an Instructional Support Center Addition and Renovation here at 514 Glover Street. If you'll just allow me briefly to go back a ways, let's fire up the Wayback Machine and go back to 1975. I was seven years old. There are at least, there's at least one member of the executive cabinet who was not born, and I believe probably two board members who weren't born in 1975. This building in which we currently stand was a Dunaway Drug Warehouse. It was never designed to house humans, and certainly not this many humans with this much electrical and technology needs. Back in '75, gas was $0.53 a gallon, a movie was $2. And the top song on the radio that year was Captain and Tenille's "Love Will Keep Us Together," and I will not sing to you. However, my favorite movie was the top movie in the theater that year, Jaws. 1975. I still look in the deep end of the pool when I get in the swimming pool. There's a great scene in Jaws where they, one of the great things is Spielberg doesn't show the shark until halfway through. Shark pops his head up as Chief Brody's shoving out chum, and Brody backs up and says, "You're going to need a bigger boat. We're going to need a bigger boat." This has served us well now for going on 45 years. We actually occupied the building in '82. Back in the day, when we occupied this building, we were the 60th-largest school district in the nation. We're now the 23rd. And depending on the metric you use, we've either doubled or tripled in size. So you can imagine the growth that's taken place in this building. We do need a bigger boat. It's time for us to have a new central office. And this is not also just a want. This is a need for safety reasons, in that since this building and the electrical limitations were not designed to house this many people, or even people at all, we are eventually going to start a fire in this building, and the sprinklers will go off, and that will cause some damage, because the electrical system just can't handle it. So we are recommending that, in accordance with SPOS 5, that the Glover Street facility, which we're going to call the Instructional Support Center, receive an addition and renovation, and that you award the contract at this time for that to Cooper &amp; Company General Contractors out of Coming, Georgia. The amount you see, $21.49 million, is budgeted in SPOS 5, and that would allow us to begin work on the project. Very simply, the first phase of the project would be to build a modest three-story office building in that direction, adjacent and connected to this building. And then the second phase would be to then renovate this two-story building. To give you some idea of the relative modest scope of this project compared to some others, I'll give you some comparative data. Chattahoochee Tech right now is building a smaller science building that would cost $23.5 million. Fulton County School District, if you look, they did their work on their Instructional Support Center in 2003. If you factor up to $2019, they spent $23 million on renovating what I believe is a seven-story office building. That does not include acquisition costs. Gwinnett County School District did their initial work in 2004. In today's dollars, they spent $51 million on their Instructional Support Center. And then the winter, Atlanta City Schools in 2003, I believe, their total cost in today's dollars, if you scale it up, would be $68 million. So this is not a Taj Mahal. This is a modest, modern office building that we can, if not be proud of, at least not be ashamed of when we host people here. And we are a one-point, soon to be $1.4 billion corporation. And then I'll note also that Marietta City Schools recently has announced plans to also redo their central office as well. So we are trying to keep pace with our competitors and have a building that will serve our students and staff well. I'm available for any questions.
Dr. Howard.
Thank you again. And I, just looking at the details of the construction, I completely agree with you. I think this expansion here is absolutely necessary. I think it's modest, but well-done, and a good use of resources. And we know we want to be good stewards of taxpayer money. I share with you privately, and also share publicly, my concern as far as with, to vote for this project ahead of some pressing projects, especially for Campbell High School expansion and renovation, and Pebblebrook High School expansion and renovation, it makes me pause to give a yes vote for this project without some discussion and reassurance that there will be no delay or impact, delay in timeline, or impact in the scope of the projects at Campbell Middle, excuse me, Campbell High School and Pebblebrook High School. So if you could just address that, because my brain was having a hard time with that, and that would help me tremendously.
Thank you. And that's a valid question. Let me assure you, and assure you all, that there will not be a negative effect on those projects or any other construction projects in SPOS 5 because of this project. We are fully confident that we can do them all. In terms of Campbell and Pebblebrook in particular, without spoiling too much, you're going to see, as Mr. Ragsalluded to, some good news soon. We are incorporating some suggestions from a variety of folks. We're finalizing design. We haven't yet finalized design, and we'll be meeting soon with some of the key stakeholders as well to get some final input from them. But I think you're going to see that, combined with some new numbers, result in some good news for those communities as well. But to your point, the answer is no. This will not have any adverse effect on those projects or others.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Anyone else? Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Adams, do we have cost savings on being able to expand our facilities and bring our employees in-house, if you will?
We do. I'll give you one easy one. When Mr. Ragsdale had the foresight to purchase the old MDJ building on the corner, that saved us $200,000 a year, almost, just in rent.
How much say they?
$200,000 a year, just in rent alone. If you recall, the HR folks were across the street, we were renting an office park, and that was almost $200,000 a year just in rent. It's also frankly a safety hazard, because if you've ever tried to cross Fairground Street at the intersection with Glover, you are playing Frogger, but with your own life in your hands trying to cross that road. But that's one example. We will incur a savings. Another savings that no one ever thinks about, but when you have large meetings, if you think about the average rate that we pay principals, for example, or administrators, and if we have a meeting that they have to commute to, and it takes two or three times to get people to commute, we'll save money by being able to have one larger meeting location there. But just in terms of efficiency, having more people in the same buildings, because the buildings will be connected. We will move the people currently in this building into the building in that direction, and then we'll move most of Brad Johnson's folks, and SPOS folks, and some others into this current building. You'll have some savings also, just because people will be able to communicate better being in one building and one campus. Phones are great, and email's okay, but there's nothing like sitting in a room with somebody that's just down the hallway and being able to talk about something. I don't have the exact dollar amount for you, Randy, but yes, we will save money by doing this.
That's excellent. Also, from our utilities efficiency, I know the warehouse down there, where finance is now, I mean, I don't know what's holding it up as far as, you know, on insulation and all that. The other thing, we get, on our projects, we get capital outlay money back from the state, correct?
We do.
Okay. So that's cost savings that's not coming, quote, "out of our SPOS funds." And on the sale of our properties, Mountain View, Martha J. Moore, and whatever, that doesn't take away from our SPOS funds. It actually adds to our budget, so that we might have a little flexibility where we can do things like this without hurting our projects. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything you want to add that I've left out?
No, sir. I think you covered it.
I just want to make sure that, you know, not to get too far in the weeds, but the monies are there. We're being very prudent with it, and we're getting monies from the state that we can't necessarily count on, but we know it's there as far as the dollar amount. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. Anyway, Ms. Davis.
What kind of projects are reimbursed by the state that Mr. Scamahorn is mentioning?
And it's a difficult, almost Byzantine formula to explain, but typically, projects that you see reimbursed are when you add additional classrooms. But it's, I'm afraid it's not even that simple. I can get you a better briefing of that, but it's fairly complex, and there are people who make a living helping districts like ours maximize our capacity. We always, obviously, try to maximize our capital outlay reimbursement and get every available resource we can.
Let me also jump in on that one, too, because we always talk about capital outlay and how it's not guaranteed, because it's just that, it's not guaranteed. The General Assembly has to vote each year to approve the funding for capital outlay dollars. So that's why, and Dr. Howard and I had this conversation very recently about, it was the past practice to include capital outlay in the revenue for SPOS. And I changed that because I don't agree with it, because it's not guaranteed money. And to include unguaranteed funding in a revenue source that the voters have voted on and is guaranteed based on a monthly income, I just don't think that that's appropriate mixture of funds. Now, we do take capital outlay dollars and reinvest it back into SPOS. So the best way to look at that is, the capital outlay is a very significant source to account for overages that always occur. As the economy is still booming, construction is one of those resulting fields that has higher costs affiliated with that. And while we do try to, and it's denoted in the SPOS notebook, we try to account for the inflation factor. It's still impossible. It's just a dice roll. When you're looking at three to five years out, when you're trying to budget for a project, that capital outlay dollars do, definitely, they do help to cover those overages. So you don't lose projects that are in the list, because another project is coming over budget.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, is that it? Well, does it help you?
It does, but any information that we could get about that would be appreciated.
We'll get you some.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Howard.
One comment and one question. The comment is related to the previous project mentioned about King Springs. I just applaud the team for finding just a wise and creative use of existing real estate. I mean, sometimes in these numbers, we lose the fact that we could very easily be spending millions of dollars just on land. millions of dollars just on land and getting land ready. So just, I just wanted to acknowledge that and appreciate that. Also, just want to make one brief question. Would the community have, I guess, any space to have access? I mean, is this kind of a, I mean, I know it's kind of like a business, but is there any space available for the community? I know that we're working on this, our one-team-one-goal mantra, so how do we incorporate that? Or has there been any thought about that in the design of this building?
Yes, sir. I'm glad you mentioned space. This will be, this will house the district successfully for the next 50 years. So we have a little room in there for some conference rooms and things like that, one of which is designed on the ground floor near the entrance to be available for meetings that a board member, for example, wanted to host involving the community, a fairly large conference room. So yes, there will be ample opportunity and space for board members or the superintendent to use this facility, and it will also make Mr. Ragsdale happy that we'll have a room where you could actually have food and not have to worry about getting on the carpet in the boardroom. So yes, sir, and more flexible of a space than currently.
Love God. This is word again.
I just appreciate having not only our administrators here and teachers here in mind, but also having the community in mind in the design of this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. Anyone else? Okay. Do we want to put it on consent? Discussion? All right.
Mr. Chair, did you say consent?
Yeah, no, we agreed discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Number four.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the moment everybody has been waiting for. I'm sure there are plenty of people tuned in across the internet and channel, whatever it is, 24, 23, something. Nobody's paying attention. What channel is it?
23.
23.
24. Got it right the first time. All right. So I'm going to ask our CFO, Brad Johnson, to go ahead and come forward. This is, as a reminder, that we're going to ask for tentative, or we're going to ask for approval of the tentative budget in tonight's meeting. That is so that we can advertise the budget and do the necessary things that we need to do to make sure that legality portions of the budget are met. Now, that being said, I am going to steal Brad Johnson's thunder. He knows I'm going to do that, but he's going to reiterate it. This is, this is no surprise as far as what I've told you I was going to focus on, and that is two things. One, the increased allotment pool, so that we can probably manage class sizes across the district, especially in relation to students with special needs classrooms. The second was maximizing the pay raise to what we could financially sustain. And I've had the discussion with a number of executive cabinet members over this process, and just a shout out to Brad, and I know he says the team effort, and it is, and a shout out to financial services, because it becomes very evident when you're dealing with these numbers, as we have been doing, that it is extremely important to the detail and the level of ability and knowledge that financial services brings to the table, because, you know, superintendent wants to do this, okay, let's do that. And then all of a sudden, the numbers don't work out, and it's a financial crisis in the middle of the year. So Brad always pays close attention to that, and he always makes sure to say, you know, 1% off is millions of dollars that can be gained or lost. So being the expertise and the, being the expert and having the expertise in that area pays dividends. That being said, we did not set out to break a record. That is, that was not our endeavor. At the end of the budget process, somebody posed the question, have we ever done a raise like this before? Well, we didn't know. So we went back to research. This will be as far back as we can find, and I think it's in the history of the Cobb County School District. This will be the largest raise that we have offered employees across the board at any point in time in the history of the Cobb County School District. We can for sure say it's the most that has been done in the past 25 years. So that being said, I'm going to give you a range, because we have the salary steps in place, we're going to have a range of pay raises. And, you know, there will be people that say, there'll be the naysayers, there always are, that say, "Well, you know, what if you didn't do as much raise, and you did this, or you did that, or you did the other?" And my response to that is, is I'm going to be, I'm going to have to disagree with that, because one of our three priorities in this district is to make Cobb the best place to teach, lead, and learn. Teach is the first word in that priority for a reason, because it's my thought that if we invest to make sure we have the best teachers and that we can retain the best teachers, the leading and the learning will be outcomes of great teachers. So it's always going to be my endeavor to make sure that we take care of the employees, and I always have the teachers as the top priority. That being said, I definitely need to give a shout out to the Atlanta Braves and SunTrust Park, because when they came to, when they relocated to Cobb, I truly did not think that this would have an impact on our general fund budget. Now, I was looking forward to SPOLOST impact greatly. But when I was involved in the economic impact study that they did, they provided me a number, and I immediately went to Brad, and I said, "You need to make sure it is right." You know, can we see these dollars? And that was the year that we had a pretty large digest growth in the county. And I'm a numbers guy, so numbers stick in my head. And I remembered the number that Brad told me that we pretty much gained from that digest growth, and it came very, very close to matching to the dollar. What they were saying, the halo effect of SunTrust Park was going to provide the general fund. And it was pretty much dead on. Those numbers, those numbers came out, so I definitely want to say, SunTrust Park has been a benefit to the school district in the general fund area. Now, all of that being said, because we have the salary steps as they are, there are going to be different people that have different percentages of raises. I want to definitely throw out another shout out to the governor, because the way that he provided school districts with the $3,000 raise was so much more beneficial to every school district, because usually, in the past, not usually, every single time that I can remember, the raise has been, "Well, we're going to do a 3% raise for teachers." And it doesn't matter if it's a 25% raise for teachers. It's always been applied to the state salary schedule. Well, when we, as a school district, pay a range of 23% to 27% over and above the state salary schedule, that 25% raise is not a 25% raise in money that we get. So the way that this governor did it by saying, "Here's $3,000 per, for every employee that's in the categories to get those raises," that was a tremendous benefit for every school district, because it was dollar-for-dollar. That allowed us to truly look at maximizing what kind of salary adjustments and raises we could provide for every employee in the district. So all of that being said, everybody had to listen to all of that, right? Because I hadn't said the number yet. So the range of raise, the minimum raise that every non-temporary employee will receive is 8%. The maximum raise that every nine, or that some non-temporary employees will receive is 12.6%. So the range of raises that we are providing in this budget is 8% to 12.6%. The 12.6% is very, very important, because that is for the newest teachers. They are getting the biggest raise. So when you factor in the steps and the supplements and all of the salary things that go into it, the 8% to 12.6% is the range of the raise that we're providing. We, obviously, we have truly maximized the dollars to make sure that we can do this. Brad has, and his staff, have ensured that it's financially sustainable. Doing these kind of things requires so much attention, but again, my focus is on the teachers and on our employees, and not just doing a raise for a certain group of employees, but trying to do a raise for every single team member on the team. And that's what this budget has within its contents. That's the only two things that there are, the raise and the allotment pool increase, which is up to 90. You will not see, now, you will see on the sheet, and Brad will take you through that in a second, there are some other items that have been adjusted. We have placed nurses on steps. We have remedied the, what we heard multiple bus drivers coming to discuss about the pay spread out across 12 months. Now, they're still hourly employees, but we have a remedy in this budget to be able to spread that pay across public safety. We have done some competitive adjustments to salary for their pay scale, because we are incurring the same issues that Cobb PD has, I'm sure you saw in the press, that they are having to endure. I don't have it in front of me, so I'm sure I'm not taking all of Brad's thunder, but I'm about at 85% now, I think. So, but I can't say enough that we can have the best ideas in the world, but if the financial services staff is not able to put together a financially stable and sustainable budget, and that's been brought about by us being very conservative with our spending, you as a board and us as an executive cabinet of what we recommend for spending, you know, there were days in the past where, you know, "This program, we need to, we need to enhance it. We need to have X number of positions for this, or we need to have X number of dollars for this enhancement of a program." We are truly looking at getting to the root of what our success is, and that's what goes on in the classroom meeting every day, that our teachers bring about. So I can't be more excited. I know you've never heard me, and in my term, to talk this much about introducing a budget. But, you know, it's, we've come from a place in Cobb since I have been here to where we have had a pay cut, we have had furlough days, we have had layoffs of teachers, which has never happened in education since I've been in education. So to be able to do this for our employees in this budget, it truly is exciting, and I know you will, you will have that same excitement. So Brad, I think I'm about up to 90%, so take that last 10% and go with it, man.
Okay. I'm done.
There you go. There you go.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, I'm going to go through the budget in a summary kind of way. You all have executive summaries at your desk, but I'm going to go slow and carefully so everybody understands exactly how this budget's been compiled. Today marks the continuation of the 2020 budget presentations and discussions with the board. As you will recall, financial services introduced the 2020 budget development process at the March 21st meeting at the boardwork session. The CCSD annual budget development process is probably one of the most impactful strategic tasks that the board engages in each year. In our previous meeting on March 21st, we reviewed the 2020 budget development calendar, and we gave a budget calendar update based on information that we are aware of at that time. I've provided another calendar at your desk for your review. Please make note of those dates and meetings. For today's April 24 budget meeting, we have a tentative information on the budget to present, as well as detailed budget data to assist you as board members in the budget development process. Today, as in previous years, we have prepared detailed information in the form of a 2020 budget notebook for each board member, along with FY 2020 budget information and estimates for other funds. So the notebook that you will be getting and be able to take home today contains a variety of information, including a detailed general fund budget overview, a general fund revenue explanation for each revenue type and how the 2020 estimate was calculated for each, a general fund expenditure appropriation explanation for each expenditure type and how the 2020 estimate for that was calculated for each. We have, contained in the notebook, an other fund budget overview. We also have other funds program detail, which are comprised primarily of grants and special revenue district programs with documentation on how the initial budget for other funds are calculated. For your information, for most of the grants, we continue last year's grant amount, because we don't know the amount for next year yet. And then during the year next year, we adjust the figures when the actual numbers are received, since many of these programs have a federal fiscal year that spans from October to September, rather than our fiscal year, which spans from July to June. So on the table today at my right, you can see the notebooks that we have for you, and we have a notebook for each of the board members with your name on it, and we would request that you would take it home, that you would review that data. Also, as we do every year in the budget, it's very transparent. Every calculation we do is out there. So right or wrong, that's what we calculated, the assumptions we used, and so we would be pleased if you would take that with you. We also, just to note, that everything we present today will be put on the internet, the main budget website for the district, so everything is available to all the publics I guess additionally, if you, as board members, have questions, I'm a phone call away. If you want to meet, I can meet with you. There's a lot of detail in this budget, but today, we're going through an executive summary of it. The next item is the 2020 budget calendar. And just to get an appreciation of building a budget of this size, I just wanted to explain the steps that go into this, and it's a lot. I'm not quite there yet. We've already reviewed the budget calendar on March 21st, but I have some reminders with regard to the budget process and the budget calendar. As previously stated, the budget calendar is a finance organizing document to ensure that the district has a professional, organized process in which to produce a $1.2 billion general fund budget and a $1.3 billion for total funds. The calendar represents a variety of tasks that must be completed in a sequence of events to ensure that the final product produces organized information, so that the superintendent and the board will have the data available so that you can make an informed decision. A review of the calendar document shows that the preparation of the budget began back in November, believe it or not. To prepare projected personnel allotments based on student counts and instructional needs, the budget department begins its preparation on or about the same timeframe to compile literally tens of thousands of accounts, salary, benefit, and operating accounts organized by business functions for review by the supervisor for each business function. The budget department has detailed instructions for each department and function on their review of the accounts. The process ensures that every single account is reviewed on an annual basis. That's very important. The budget is built from the bottom up, so when you see these numbers, we've started at a very detailed level. The budget department compiles all of this information for presentation to the superintendent for his review and his input. Just as in previous years, it is the superintendent's task to first present a balanced budget to the board that has sufficient resources to maintain the good operations of the district. Beginning in late February and in March, the superintendent and executive cabinet has met and compiled a tentative budget for presentation to the board, and as a result, that brings us to today. As we continue to present the results of the budget development process thus far, the remainder of the budget calendar is a schedule of additional meetings as the board proceeds with consideration of the budget. I would ask that each board member make note of these meetings on the calendar. Today, on April 24th, a budget hearing is scheduled for 6:30 tonight. Today, on April 24th, a budget hearing is scheduled for 6:30 tonight before the night board meeting. After we review the tentative budget today with you, the tentative budget is also scheduled for approval today at the voting meeting. Now, as always, the tentative budget is not final and can be changed, but we ask for this tentative budget approval so that the district can move forward in advertising the budget to the citizens of Cobb County for their review, which will also facilitate their opportunity to provide input into the 2020 budget. So, as soon as we get the information out, they'll be able to review the details and be able to have comments and input on it. The main thrust of the budget development process each year is the development of the general fund budget. And you'll note every year, we focus on the general fund budget. Because why? It's by far the biggest fund. We have many funds, but the general fund is by far the biggest. The next document for presentation today is a budget overview, which is an executive summary of the 2020 general fund tentative budget for consideration for the board. So, a copy of today's presentation is at your desk today, and we're gonna have it up on the screen and actually go through some details about the budget and just how we do, what we do to compile it. So, I'm gonna go ahead and start with the presentation. And if we could go to the next slide, please. Very good, thank you. So, I'm gonna tell a story about the budget, how we presented it, how we compiled it. But in order to provide for an orderly, accurate approach, best practices state that we should have a balanced, audited starting point for the 2020 budget development process. That being the case, our starting point was the FY 2019 original budget that the board already approved last May in 2018. This starting point also allows for a high degree of accuracy in the process, because we have already been audited by our independent auditors last year. You might remember that the district received an independent financial audit as of June 2018 at the January 2019 board meeting. And our auditors, Modelin and Jenkins CPAs, presented their financial audit of the school district to the board, and they found two things regarding the district's $1.2 billion budget. Number one, our financial statements are presented fairly, and we received a clean, unmodified audit. Don't take that for granted. Audits are difficult, and many organizations, when they're audited, they have many, many findings. But number two, the district had zero audit findings. And as always, I credit the financial team, because that's no accident. They worked hard to compile these numbers. So, on the screen today, in the first slide, let's just go down the rows. On the screen, you can see in the first row, the original 2019 board-approved budget. On the second and third rows, you can see the original budget was later revised by the board when we received the final property value digest values. And so, per the Cobb County Tax Assessor, their estimate of property tax digest growth went from 6% to 8.21%. So, when we got that information after the budget was approved last year, we found that we had additional money. The superintendent recommended that we'll use that additional money for what? For a raise. So, we increased the raise. The raise was originally approved in the budget last year at 1.1%. The raise was increased to 2.6. So, once again, the money is invested in our staff, and that's appreciated by all. In the fourth row, we listed all the board-approved budget revisions during the current year. And you've seen these revisions as we've done the financial quarterly reports during the year. All those numbers are the same, the numbers that you've already seen. And then finally, in row number five, you can see the most recent board-approved revised budget. And that matches the quarterly report that was presented to the board back in Jan., I think it was February. And so, ladies and gentlemen, this becomes our starting point for the budget. We feel very good about these numbers. The numbers that we're starting with are board-approved. The numbers have been audited, and it's a very great starting point, and it provides for additional accuracy. Next slide, please. We presented some of this information in this next slide before, but don't take these things for granted. And this is good information for you as board members to know as you review the budget and consider the budget and make your decision on how to vote on the budget. The first section is data regarding the district's millage rates. So, a millage rate is a tax rate. A millage rate is a tax rate that means specifically $1 per $1,000 of assessed value. And that's, and the property values are not assessed by us. They're assessed by the Cobb County Tax Assessor. The district's general fund millage rate, and you can see, continue looking at item number one, the general fund millage rate is 18.9 mils. And that is 1.1 mils below the 20-mil cap legislated by the Georgia General Assembly. Some interesting data regarding the general fund millage includes, the value of 1 mil is approximately 26 million. So, that's good to know. That's part of the safety net that I take into consideration as we develop the budget. Since we are still 1.1 mils under the 20-mil cap, the value of 1.1 mils is 28 million. So, that's 2 more million, that's a safety net. The district's debt service millage rate is 0 mils. The district eliminated all long-term debt back in 2007 and has remained long-term debt-free since then. The district is in an elite national category for being a large public school district with no long-term debt. The second item presents our Moody's Investor Service operational and financial credit ratings. This district has the highest possible credit ratings in the world, with a AAA long-term credit rating and also a Mig 1 or a municipal investment-grade short-term credit rating. We are one of the very few organizations in the country with both of these ratings, and that includes corporations, too. These ratings provide an independent, professional evaluation indicating that both district operations, because this review is not just a review of financial operations. These credit ratings, they review the management of the organization as well. It's very extensive. In the reviews, they ask many questions, a lot of data is given out about how this school district is run. Credit ratings, from a financial perspective, represent the credit worthiness of corporations and government entities where investment of professional assess, I'm sorry. Where investment professional access the likelihood that a debt can be paid back. These ratings play a key role in borrowing costs and are an indicator of an organization's skill and experience with regard to financial operations. Our district is one of the few organizations, school districts, or corporations in the country that has a AAA rating. In fact, there are only two U.S. corporations left that have a AAA rating, and those companies are Microsoft and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So, we are a pretty select, elite company in this financial area. Additionally, there are only 15 states left that maintain a AAA credit rating, and Georgia's one of those, and only 0.5% of public school districts that have a AAA credit rating. So, I just wanted to state, and I'm not sure I really stated this before, but it's not just an evaluation of finance and the finances of the district. It is a very in-depth review of how this district is run. They just don't give these credit ratings out to any Tom, Dick, and Harry. They are very impressed with how this school district is run from an operational standpoint, and we're very fortunate to be in the position we are. The third section represents current year 2019 budget highlights, which include for the current year, a 2.6% raise for all non-temporary employees, a 1.1% bonus for all eligible non-238-day employees, a decreased work year for 238-day employees, and a full step increase for all eligible employees. The fourth section presents some general.
Let me jump in there right quick, because I do want to point out that that was last year. And you remember, that's how we differentiated with the bonus. Last year, we did the 1.1% bonus for basically everybody below principal. And so, this year, we're not doing that. Because, again, the reason we did the bonus was because we couldn't do as much raises we wanted to. But the benefit, the biggest benefit for the employee is to maximize the raise such that that's included in TRS. So, this year, there is no bonus for anybody, whether or not it's a decreased work year or whether it was a 1.1% bonus. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. Thanks, Barry.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on in the fourth section of this slide, we present some general budget metrics, which state that 92% of our budget is for salaries and fringe benefits. That sounds large. We're very labor-intensive. But guess what? Every other school district is, too. We're in the people business, and that's what our budget is focused on. I think it's also important to point out in this slide that 72% of the budget is focused on instruction and the classroom. Very important. A longstanding threshold for instructional percent of a budget is 60%. So, we're well over that threshold, of the 60% threshold. And finally, general administration represents an extremely small portion of the budget at around 1%. So, obviously, the budget provides evidence that instruction and the classroom and school support are the district's main focus. And then finally, the fifth section represents a percentage breakout of general fund revenue. And here, you can see that state funding and local funding make up the bulk of the general fund operations. So, our funding streams, we have two main funding streams. And in finance, we focus on these funding streams very carefully. We want to know what the numbers are. We need to understand the numbers. We need to know how to estimate those numbers. And there's a lot that goes into those totals there on that screen. Okay, next slide, please. The next slide presents recent budget accomplishments since 2015. And considering our climb out of the economic environment, this is a lot of great accomplishments for the superintendent, the board, and this district. As you can see, in each of these years, salary steps and raises have been added to the budget. And I think this recognizes the biggest asset in our school district, our teachers and those who support our teachers. And I don't need to go through each of those things, but you can see that in '15, there was a 2% salary restoration. In '16, there was a 4% salary increase. '17, a 2.5 salary increase. In '18, a 1.1% bonus. And then in the current year, I already covered those items. So, we've been able to accomplish a lot of things in the budget. But obviously, the economy's improving, and there's a lot of factors that have gone into how this budget is evolving and how our organization is involving with the resources that we have available to us. Next slide, please. The next slide is a little bit redundant, but I think I have some extra comments about the calendar. But just for everybody in the room, I just won't assume anything, okay? So, what is a budget? Well, basically, it's a series of estimates. An estimation of what we think our revenue will be. And then based on that revenue stream, the district prioritizes how that revenue will be spent. Sounds easy in theory, but the sheer quantity and size of our budget makes it quite complex. That's why we have to have an elaborate sequence of events. And there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes where we compile this budget. A lot of things that the board and the public don't see, but imagine tens of thousands of accounts being prepared. In the first area of this calendar, we prepare budget analysis and gather budget information. Very important point, and I know I'm being a little redundant here, but per state of Georgia law, it's the superintendent's responsibility to prepare a budget, a balanced budget first, and then submit it to the CCSD board for your review and input. Second area is where the district tracks legislative activities that may impact the education of our students and the budget. Obviously, one of the main, two main sources of our revenue is state revenue. So, legislative activities and impact have a serious effect on what we do and what we can do. And we try to anticipate what's good for us this year and what things may impact us in future years. So, there's a lot of discussions and meetings going on to see how we can influence, or at least tell our legislators what we need and how that will impact us in a good way and how it might impact us in a bad way. The third area, our budget meetings are conducted with the board based on information compiled by administration. Very important point of why we're starting the budget now. Revenue data estimates and final Georgia legislative data is usually not finalized until mid-spring. So, for example, finance did not receive QBE state funding reports from the state until a few weeks ago. So, it's hard for us to give you good information to work on the budget until we have those estimates. I can estimate it, and we can be fairly close, but you don't know. And in the legislature, one year can be a lifetime. You just don't know. Additionally, we get estimates in late March from the Cobb County Tax Assessor as to property value digest growth. An additional point regarding property tax estimates, the assessor will give us the final digest numbers at the end of June. So, we're actually preparing this budget and approving it before the end of June, because we have to have a budget before June 30th. For these reasons, it's very difficult to bring to the board reliable numbers on the tax digest. But as in previous years, I will say, and I want to applaud the tax assessor for actually meeting with us every year in March. What a good deal for us, because we have no idea, you know, what is the digest growth gonna be? And I don't take that for granted either, because I have seen other places, and they don't have meetings like that. And you have to estimate it, and it's extremely difficult. So, kudos to those guys. I mean, it's, but still, we didn't have that information until very recently. So, again, we're waiting on state of Georgia QBE data. We're waiting on tax assessor data. But now, I think we have good data to bring to you. And of course, I don't want to recommend budget improvements to the superintendent with bad revenue data, because that's just, that won't work. It just won't work. The fourth area on this calendar is the school district's schedule to conduct public hearings to gather input from citizens. We have a budget public forum tonight at 6:30, and I hope everybody will come. I hope at least you'll watch it on TV and watch this budget presentation on TV. We also have another budget public forum at 6:30 on May 16th. So, and that's at 6:30. And then, of course, the district is scheduled to approve the final budget at the May board meeting. I will say once again that by, you know, we'll be asking the board to consider and approve a tentative budget today. That's not final. It can be changed. We can have more meetings. But at least the citizens will then have information where they can evaluate the budget, see what's in it, and make comments. Okay, next slide. So, the next slide is a revenue, a chart about the general fund revenue. And when I look at a chart like this, I think that's just too easy. You got, what, five numbers? There's a lot more numbers that's gone into that than that, I can assure you. But at any rate, I'm gonna go through an executive summary of the budget, and the next three slides are an executive summary for purposes of this presentation. The budget notebook that we have prepared for each board member contains much more detail than these numbers and things that have gone into these numbers. And you're welcome to look at those. You can call me, or you can meet with me if you need more detail. But this first slide represents the FY 2020 tentative general fund revenue appropriations. So, our fiscal year, fiscal year sounds like a fancy name, but it's not fancy. It's just the time that we account for money. And we account for our money on a fiscal year that starts July 1 and ends June 30. The first row represents our property tax revenue estimate of 30.1 million. And we are using the property tax digest growth that was given us by the tax assessor, a 5.5% digest property growth. In looking at this number, we've tried to look at exemptions to see how that might impact our exemptions. We have tried to, we have looked at the different types of exemptions, and we've tried to factor that into a trend. that into a trend type of way. And we think that the number that we're presenting today will factor in what growth we think might happen with the exemptions. So we feel pretty good about that. The second row represents our estimate of state of Georgia quality basic education. The acronym is QBE. Revenue of $43.3 million. We have already received documentation from the state regarding these funds, so we feel reasonably certain about this number. Highlights of the incremental increase is both additional funds representing the governor's funding for raises for teachers, media specialists, psychologists, social workers, bus drivers, and food service workers. The state of Georgia's increased funding is based also on the state's salary schedules, but those state's salary schedules are generally 20% to 27% less than the Cobb County school salary schedules. This is an important distinction, because the Cobb school salary schedules are much higher than the state's salary schedules. Other additional revenue funding in this category for QBE represents additional QBE funds for student growth. So the raise money, that's, that sounds good, but we also need money, extra state money for student growth, and they've included that. And that's not a gimme every year, and so we're looking very closely for that. Funds for certified employees' training and experience. That's another thing that we look at in quite a look of depth, because when we present our information to the state, we present base salaries, the state funds positions based on base salaries, and then they give us additional money based on additional degrees that our employees have and their years of experience. So that is extremely important to us, too. And I like to compliment our HR department for preparing these training and experience reports, because it's extremely important to the budget. And then there are small increases for pupil transportation and counselors. Transportation money, yes, we do get money for transportation from the state, but generally speaking, a metric you can think of in your head is we get about 20 cents on the dollar for what we need to operate our transportation budget from the state. Another issue in state funding that's very challenging every year is the local five-mill share. So what is local five-mill share? Well, local five-mill share is, they deduct from state funding the amount of five mils from our state funding, because they expect us to levy millage from a local perspective to make up that. Local five-mill share has been increasing, and I showed you some reports at the last meeting of how that's been increasing. I believe last year it increased by $10 million, so that was 10 million less in money. The incremental change of this category for this year, it increased a little bit smaller. So instead of increasing 10 million, it increased by 6 million. So our local fare share went up from 155 million to 161 million. And then finally, the next row, back on that slide, yes. The last row on this is other revenue. So other revenue sounds like a miscellaneous category, but we throw it in there just for an executive summary type of thing. So what is local revenue? Well, you're going to, you're going to be able to see in your notebooks just all the categories that go into local revenue, and you might be surprised what's contained in local revenue. I'll just name a few of them. Intangible taxes, real estate transfer taxes, alcoholic beverage taxes, liquor-by-the-drink taxes, interest income, cell tower revenue, sale of assets, local grants, ROTC federal revenue reimbursements for our ROTC instructors, et cetera. There's a, there's a number of these other revenue types, and they're all listed in the notebook. But each, each of these revenue types, they're not easy to project, but what we've done is we've evaluated each one of those. We've tried to take the numbers and trend it back for a certain amount of years, and we choose to believe for those other revenue types that past performance is an indication of what the future might look like. And I don't like to go too far in the future. One year isn't enough for me. But we take that approach in projecting these other revenue types, and we feel very reasonably certain that those, that incremental increase in the revenue types is, is a good number. One of the things I can report, the economy is improving. One of the major increases in that other revenue is interest income. Interest rates have increased dramatically, and so even if interest rates only go up from 2% to 3%, for us, and the millions that we project and invest, it means a lot of money for us. So, and you know, in the good old days, interest income could be 10 or 15 million dollars. So we're realizing a good increase in interest income. So a big picture view of the general fund revenues, that per our estimates, we believe that available FY 2020 general fund revenue will increase from $1,078,823,890 to $1,160,929,101 in 2020. And that's our best estimate at this time. And of course, when we have estimates like this, we'll start the year, we'll have quarterly reports, we'll inform the board how we're doing. If we're not performing according to those estimates, then I'll have to come back and tell you. And hopefully, our estimates are to the good if they're off. Our estimates are usually conservative. Chris already said it once, I'll say it again. If I'm off by 1%, that means I'm 23 or 24 million dollars. And if I'm going to be off 23 or 24 million dollars, it better be to the good. And I think that's what Chris expects of me. And so the estimates are conservative, but then if we end up having too much money, then we can spend it next year. So I think that's the way to go. Some of that, some of those dollars sound like a lot of money, but I have to, I have to look at this budget in terms of percents, because 1% is a lot of money, but how do you make estimates that are closer than 1%? It's almost impossible. And in fact, I would challenge, it'd be interesting for me to look at corporations to see, can they estimate better than 1%? I doubt it. So I think we're in a good spot in our estimates. Knock on wood, you know, we hope that, you know, our past performance will continue. All right, our next slide, please. Our next slide is, represents the FY 2020 tentative general fund expenditure appropriations. So as discussed previously, we start with the most recent FY 2019 revised budget figure as a starting point, and we incrementally add on to that figure to compile the 2020 budget. So that's how we choose to prepare the budget here in incremental fashion. There's, there's different ways to compile a budget, but we found that the incremental approach is the most accurate and most understandable way to do it. So I'll go through these items. So in line, in item two, line A, I can begin to explain these incremental increases. So first of all, we're going to subtract one-time expenditures from the budget, because we started with last year's, we added on changes. So it's a story that we're telling in the budget, but if it's one-time expenditures last year, that means we don't need it anymore. So we're going to subtract those out. And so some of those, we might be reimbursed from SPOST, because we did some technology project, and we did some architect fees for Sprayberry, and we've taken those into The next slide item, item B, includes additional operating budgets given to new schools when they first open for a period of two years. So we give them, when they open, when we open a new school, we give them additional workdays, and we give them a double allotment for two years. But then, at the end of two years, we consider them to be a school that's in fully in operation. They don't need extra help being a new school. So then we take that money away at the end of two years, the additional double allotments and things that we have done. So that's an adjustment for those. And so we've had these schools complete their two years, so we're subtracting another incremental amount. The next item is number C, includes step and salary adjustments to the 2020 budget. For 2020, a full salary step is included for all eligible employees, and an increase in TRS, that's the teacher's retirement system, employer costs from 20.9% to 21.14%. So that's a little bit of an increase, but the state funded 2/3 of that increase, so that's, that's a good thing. The next item is some of the main improvements that we've made that Chris already alluded to. So for FY 2020, included in the budget, we have included an instructional pool of teachers or instructional positions for 90 positions. We have included 7.5 additional custodian positions, and we base those additional custodians based on square footage, and maintenance has a formula they use. They're very accurate with that. We have included school nurse salary and steps, and they're included where these school nurses will receive a 2% step every other year. So we've included that in the budget. We've included a campus officer competitive raise adjustment, and the superintendent will give me further direction on that as we proceed. And then we've also included a bus driver salary spread project. So just to try to explain this a little bit, I'm not sure exactly how to explain it, but bus drivers are paid by the hour, they're not salary. And so, but that can be a good thing, too, because when they work overtime, they get time and a half. So there's good things to that, too. But we, we heard what they were saying, and we went about in our payroll system to try to understand, okay, how can we spread this effectively? And also, not just effectively, but in a way that they can understand it. So we already spread the salaries for the summer. So there's already a certain amount of dollars withheld during the year so that they can have paychecks during the summer. And we do that. And in essence, that's kind of like a salary anyhow, the way we're doing it. But there are other periods during the year that they express concern about to where winter break, Christmas holiday breaks, spring break, where the students aren't present. So guess what? The bus drivers aren't working those days. So, and they're paid biweekly. They're paid in 26 biweekly checks a year. So what we're proposing to do is spread the pay a little bit more so that we will have a bucket in their payroll system to where, when we come to one of those points, they will have accumulated money, and we can empty that bucket for that time period. Best way I can explain it. But what we did, too, was we tried to calculate that in a way that, does it really spread it? Is it real? Did we spread it correctly? Well, if I pretended that those bus drivers were on a salary and just took their base pay, biweekly payroll, 26 paychecks a year, and divide it by 26, that's what they get every paycheck, every other two weeks. Well, by doing this spread project in the way that we spread for the summer, and then we'll also now spread for the breaks, we compared just an equal spread of 26 versus our spread, how it will work out, and we were amazingly close on how that could work out. There will be some months where they get a little bit more, there may be some months where they get a little bit less, but it spreads it pretty effectively. And what's really good in the payroll system, too, the bus drivers will understand it. So at any rate, that's the best way I can explain it. The next slide item includes a variety of miscellaneous expenditure adjustments to account for incremental program changes and inflation for items such as utilities and grants. And then finally, the last item in the expenditure category includes a salary increase for all non-temporary employees, and the recommended raise in the FY 2020 tentative budget is a salary increase range of 8% to 12.6% for all non-temporary employees, depending upon step eligibility, because all employees are on a salary step, or most of them are. And so the salary steps are, can be different on different salary schedules. The salary increase presents the importance of employees for directly or indirectly providing an education for all of our students in Cobb County. And then let's just go to the last slide, please. So after all that dialogue and presentation, there is a summary to this, and the summary is this. We're proposing in a tentative budget that the FY 2020 revenue appropriations are $1,160,929,101. The FY 2020 expenditure appropriations are $1,179,286,045. Yes, we are using a little bit of fund balance at $18 million, but the board might note that when we ended the year last year, our unassigned fund balance went up a little bit, so I felt like we could use a little bit of fund balance to supplement this budget, and it worked out very well, actually. And then, of course, let's just go through the highlights of the slide. General fund millage rate of 18.9 mils, no millage increase, long-term debt-free since 2007. AAA long-term rating, short-term Mig 1 rating, highest Moody's investor operational and financial credit ratings in the industry. Local revenue property value digest growth at an estimate of 5.5. When we meet with the property assessor at the end of June, if it's more, I'll let you know. I mean, that's, that's our best estimate at this time. A position pool for instructional positions of 90 positions, school nurse steps, 7.5 custodian positions based on square footage, a campus officer competitive salary adjustment, a budgeted fund balance usage of $18 million, adjusting the bus driver pay schedule so that the base pay is spread more equally throughout the year as requested by the board and the superintendent, and we tried our best to listen to the bus drivers. We have a step increase for all eligible employees, and we have a salary increase for all non-temporary employees, a salary increase range of 8% to 12.6% depending upon step eligibility. And I think that's it, and I'm out of breath. And I'm open to questions.
All right. I'm going to guess, does the superintendent have something else he wants to say at this point?
I took it all up front.
All right. Dr. Howard, you have a question, sir?
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation. Can you just explain one more time about, I understand spreading out the pay for our bus drivers as they hoped for, which is great news. I just want to understand, how much does that cost us? Just so I can understand why it wasn't done previously.
Well, we, we have engaged in a new payroll system several years back, and we felt like when we went into the new payroll system, that the bus drivers would be paid on an hourly basis. And actually, per fair labor standards, we have to pay them on an hourly basis. They're hourly employees. But as I said before, they get time and a half for overtime, too, so that's good. We do, we do currently spread their paycheck, so they get pay in the, in the summer, so they get four equal checks in the summer. So there, the two months that they don't work, they'll get a paycheck. We tried to, in previous years, offer them additional work during the times that we have a winter break or holiday break, and some took us up on that and some didn't. I think we're probably still going to offer that again, where they can come in and work extra if they want to, even on top of spreading the pay. But we heard the bus drivers, and we looked at, okay, we're already spreading the money in the summer. And so then we sat down and discussed it in finance, and, well, how can we just expand that approach? Because that approach seems to work. They all like being paid in the summer. And so we looked at each of the 26 pay periods, and we looked at when the shortfalls might occur, and then we tried to decide, well, how much of a deduction, you know, like they have a deduction now for, so they get pay in the summer. How much more of a deduction will they need so that we can spread the money all the way throughout the year for those breaks? And we came up with another percentage to do that. And so, like I said, when we, when we did that, it seemed to work. And I guess, you know, maybe I never thought of it before, but you know, we listened to what they were saying, and...
Yeah, let me, let me jump in, Brad. So, because you got to remember, too, Brad, Brad left Cobb for a time period and then came back, because he realized he'd made a crucial mistake in his career analysis. So... crucial mistake in his career analysis. So kind of going back to the new payroll system, that was kind of the crux of the decision. Getting to, to the point of your question, why haven't we done this before? So what we were coming off of as a payroll system was literally a homegrown system. I'm not saying it was bad, but when you have a homegrown system, you, you are depending on the people that grew it to maintain it. And so it was literally, how old?
30.
30 years old. So a software application is 30 years old. Think about 30 years ago from today, how many applications are still around? So we were using that far beyond end of life status on that application. So it had been manipulated and, and crazy things were done to that system that just quite honestly could not be done with a state of the art payroll system that we were going to. When, when payroll systems are put in, when you have hourly employees, they expect to produce a check based on a number of hours put in to the system. So to come up with what we have already done, but then what we're expanding on doing, it was because this issue was brought up and we looked at it to see, okay, how can we mitigate this? And, and the comparison is, is done a lot of times of comparing us to other districts. The, the problem with that is, is there's a lot of other districts that do exactly what we're doing, but on a much more in the weeds basis because they are much smaller. So when you have 100 bus drivers or less, you can do things a lot differently and, and a lot more customized to do that. When we have over a thousand bus drivers and buses on the road, we can't do that customization to that degree. But that's the reason that we also have the extra things that, that bus drivers can sign up for, field trips, extra routes, and then the, the other things that are identified too during those time periods, not only just throughout the year to get the overtime too, but then during those time periods specifically where the, the checks are lower because we have breaks and when we have breaks, the buses are not running. So I know that's a long answer to your question, but that's why it is coming up to now because we had kind of done a version of this already. But then when the bus drivers came and spoke, public comment, you know, we, we listened to employees. And so we went back and we had discussion in executive cabinet about, okay, at what level have, have we already done this? What level can we take it to? Because there is a, a breaking point to where you can reduce a monthly paycheck too much to try to make up for one that's lower and it's going to hurt more people than it helps. So this version kind of, I think splits, splits the line a little bit, if you will, that we think that, you know, for the next year, and we'll, we'll find out over the next year as, as we implement this. So, you know, if this is not the solution, we can certainly go backwards, you know? I don't think we do anything else forward to, to modify this solution, but we can certainly go back if, if need be. But, you know, we think that this is going to be the best of both worlds where we're offering other opportunities with, you know, to, to help with that bus driver pay, but also bus drivers are included in the raise as well. So that, that's an important note to take note of as well. So I hope that helps. All right.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, we've got two questions that are kind of the same thing. And I don't know if they're covered in the, in the raise or if they're independents. With coaches and coaching supplements and then subs, are, are those salary schedules covered?
Yes.
And they'll get whatever it is, an 8% raise or a subpay instead of being 100, might be 108, something to that effect? Those are both covered?
All the supplements will be increased by 8% and the substitute raise will include the 8% as well.
That's very good. Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Banks, Mr. Morgan was next, and then you. All right. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brad, I appreciate it. I have three questions. Drill down a little bit more for me because I know it is a practice in education that you don't get a salary and step increase every year depending upon your, whatever year you might be. So, and I think that's, I feel like that's something that needs to be corrected. But explain to me when you said that depending upon, depending upon salary step eligibility, what does that mean for that person who's not eligible for a step increase just because they happen to be a certain year? But what does that mean in terms of their raise?
So I'm kind of getting a little bit out of my lane and I may need help from the expert, John Adams. But some salaries, some salary schedules, you can, you're a part of the schedule, you're getting a step every year. But then there are plateaus where you don't get one for a couple of years. And then you get another one after a couple of years. So the salary schedules have plateaus, some like that. So some people may not be eligible for a step in this year.
But let me jump in. You know, I was going to jump in. The, the, those people that are on the plateaus will actually get a bigger step because the salary scale is adjusted per the, the raise. So
That's true.
So let's say you're, you're at step 15 and you're plateaued and you don't get another step until 18. All right. So you're plateaued for two years. So step 18 salary has been adjusted by 8% plus whatever the jump is. So it's not just 8%, it's whatever that step is as well. So then that step 18, once you get there, you're going to also get a bigger step than you would if you would have gotten the step today.
Okay. So if I'm, and I know we're arbitrarily throwing out years that you don't get a raise, I mean, get a step increase. So if I'm at year 15 and I'm plateaued, I don't, I get the raise, I get the 8%. And then when I get to whatever year I'm eligible again, then you're saying that that will be a bigger increase?
Yes.
Money in my pocket for that. Okay. All right. All right. That's the first question. The second question I have is, I know a part of this will be prognostication and conjecture, but what this proposed raise, where might that put us in the pecking order with our competitors?
We were just wondering who would ask that question? Because I asked it too.
There you go.
Well, we're going to be, we're going to be the number one?
Right.
So, so Mr. Morgan, I'm glad you asked that because prognostication is my other middle name besides Joseph.
Hilarious.
And you are asking me to prognosticate. So let me, let me warm up my crystal ball a little bit here. Just don't, don't swear any of these answers. But I look at, at four data points for, and let's just take teachers for now, teacher salary. I look at what we refer to as new teachers. That is a step one teacher with a bachelor's degree. And then I look at early mid-career. That is a master's degree, step 10. Then I look at kind of late mid-career specialist degree, step 20. And then I look at the top end, which is a doctorate, step 30. So I like to look at those four different data points. Right now, we rank seventh for the starting teacher pay, but we're tightly bunched with about three of the districts there at seven. We currently rank first for master's degree, step 10. And then we currently rank second for specialist degree, step 20, and then fall back down to seventh again for the top end, doctorate, step 30. It's hard to tell because it's not what we call a static analysis. We don't, we don't know exactly yet what other districts are doing, but my best estimates are that we'll pick up two, maybe three slots and perhaps go from seventh to third, maybe, maybe potentially even second, but I would say
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. First, seven out of what?
Oh, 35. No, 66. Pardon me if we count Wilcox County.
Local, I mean metro, not all that.
DeKalb and Atlanta are the highest. They're going to be tough to catch, but if we have a couple of years like this, I think we can.
Right. But how many are we talking 12? Seven out of 15, seven out of 10, seven out of?
Oh, seventh out of all of them in the state.
Yeah, but metro.
Well, you look at DeKalb, out of the, the big six in metro, you have DeKalb, Atlanta, Fulton, Clayton, Gwinnett, and then Cobb.
Okay.
But that's, that's a little unfair because they're, we're tightly bunched. We are only less than $200 away from, from catching Gwinnett, which I'd love to do, drag them down from behind. And we're within striking distance of the good folks in Clayton County too. So my hope is that we could, we could perhaps get to fourth and at least make up some ground there. We should retain our first place ranking for that incredibly important master's degree taps, the step 10, early, early, mid-career.
And you lay with them mid-career, right?
Early mid.
Okay.
I said new, early mid, late mid, and then top end.
Okay.
I, I would prognosticate that we'll go to first for a specialist degree, step 20, that late mid-career. Those two, by the way, are very important for instructional effectiveness because those are your teachers who have learned their craft and that are really hitting a sweet spot in terms of instructional effectiveness, the early and late, late mid-career. And then I think we'll, we'll make up some spots at the top end where we're currently again seventh for that absolute top end pay.
Here's another point too to take on is that early mid-career is when you're vested. So that 10-year mark is very important. And I, I hold that in very high regard because teachers that have stayed in it past that fifth year, because you know the stat, you know, 47% leave education within the first five years. So getting to that 10th year, you're vested. So you're, you're here. You're in education barring some, you know, anomaly. Saying that we're number one in that particular area, number one says, the teachers that have gone back to get a master's degree or, or that started out and had a master's degree and now are vested in TRS, they're in it to win it. So if we can attract that group of teachers as being number one, we need to do everything we can to remain number one. Now, the, the baby teachers, the first year teachers, those, we've got to do better at getting here, the, the attracting. So that's, that's what we're hoping to your point, where we're going to move up from seven. We're hoping we're going to gain two to three slots on that and
But that's the 12.6 part. Did I hear you correct?
Yes, 12.6. So our, our starting teacher salaries now is at 44 and change?
43,465.
43,465, close. So yeah. So you're talking about, and, and you get into kind of the differences in that range because different salary scales are weighted differently. So a lot of salary scales for teachers are weighted higher at the, at the back end of it to keep them in the field of education till they retire. So you get a bigger step increase. Give me a, give me an example of a step increase, a big step increase on a, on a pay scale.
So, well, T4 from six to seven is 4%.
So the 4% is pretty significant for a step. So, you know, again, so that's, that's going to be a 12% raise for that T4 position. So the, the new teachers though, that we're bringing into the district, we need to focus on our competitiveness there because it's, it's a supply-demand problem. You know, we're not, we're not seeing the supply that the demand is there. I mean, you know, again, you've heard me say, we would go to, we would go to recruit and you're interviewing the best of the best. That's, that's reversed now. The, the, the actual graduates are interviewing districts to see where they want to go work. So, you know, when we say Cobb, the best place to teach, learn, it pays dividends in more ways than just, you know, talking about a raise kind of thing because attracting those new teachers into the field of education to come to Cobb and stay at Cobb, most importantly, or not most important, equally as important of attracting is retaining. So if we get them to that point and the light at the end of the tunnel is, you know, you get a master's degree and you hit 10 years, you're in the district that pays the most for your resume.
Okay. One other question. Board member Johnson brought up supplements for coaches. One of the things I have brought up that's important to me is supplements for teachers who have these additional responsibilities during the school day. I'm, I'm grade level chair. I have additional responsibilities in the school building, making things happen. And I run the data team, whatever the case might be. If I'm not mistaken, well, first the question is, will they also get a boost in their supplements in this budget? Two, one of the, one of the areas I found was that supplements, if I was, if I had additional responsibility as an elementary school teacher, additional responsibilities, I didn't see, and I'm thinking back to latter part of last year, I didn't see that they were getting supplements as opposed if I were doing that same job in middle school or high school. Does the budget, does the proposed budget account for increased supplements for middle school and high school people already getting supplements? Do they get increased? And secondly, does this budget also account for supplements if I am teaching fourth grade at blah, blah, blah school and I am data, data lead or whatever the case might be? Does the budget account, the proposed budget account for that as well?
So the first part of your question is the raise will be added to all supplements. So that's, that's the answer to the first question. The second question, I think I'm a little bit out of my league. If one position at a different type school or a different level, is it different and the supplements reflect that? I don't know.
They do not currently, but we are looking at that based on a, a previous discussion, Mr. Morgan. The difficulty when we're still trying to wrap our head around it is exactly finding the position of the metric at the elementary level. But the three of us have looked at that and will continue to look at that.
Quick follow-up. So right now, if I am at Harmony Leland Elementary and I'm teaching fifth grade, and I am, I am the person that is over my grade level and I'm responsible for data. If I'm not mistaken, right now, I don't get a supplement, but if I were to take those same responsibilities and do them in middle school, I would receive, I would receive a supplement. If I remember correctly, that's I remember, I remember bringing that up in
We need to, we need to research that one because that, that does not sound like, if it is accurate, then, then I totally agree with you. We do have disparity here, but I don't think that data team leads have a supplement, but
Well, maybe if you run in a, you grade level chair.
You know?
If I'm in the fifth grade and, like I went to a school and they were having their data team meeting and they had one teacher who was the point person, hey, Ms. Johnson, here's your information and this how much you grew and this is the, and, and this particular teacher was responsible for making sure all the teachers had the common assessments and making sure we could go through the data. And that's just a whole lot of extra responsibility in addition to teaching. And from, and I could be wrong, but I feel like I remember that that person does not get a supplement. But if I were doing that same thing in middle school, I would get a supplement. So that is my question as it relates to if the proposed budget accounts for that, because I feel like if it doesn't, I certainly would like to see if that's feasible and possible that we can account for those people who are, have those additional responsibilities that's so crucial to student data and achievement.
So Mr. Morgan, I think you're correct. And it's hard for my 50-year-old eyes to read this on my phone, but there are high school supplements, high school chairperson, academic team, theater sponsor, things like that. And there are obviously coaching supplements. We're on a different page. But in terms of academic supplements, there are middle school subject area supplements as well, language arts, that kind of thing. So we, we actually had looked and talked about trying to find the equivalent to that at the elementary level. We'll do a little more looking at that. Really, we need to talk to some elementary principals and kind of get their own point of what the equivalent is. It's not, it's not necessarily just someone who uses data because all of our teachers should be using data equally. But we'll have to look at exactly what that leadership role takes at the elementary level, kind of what the, what the equivalent of that middle school subject area supplement is. There, as you know, at elementary, they're not subject areas. There, as you know, at elementary, they're not subject areas. In fifth grade, you teach all the areas. So we have to figure out exactly what that equivalent would be to be able to do that. But your, your basic premise is correct.
Okay, one other quick follow-up to it. So I guess my specific ask is, is it possible to corral that and see where that might stand for this particular budget cycle and see if it's feasible to infuse that? Because I just think it's right if you're taking all that additional responsibility and you are doing so for five other people.
Yeah, let's, let's go back and look into it because I, there's, there's too much gray area for my comfort level right now. Because I, it's a great point, a great question, but I need to, I need to get some definitive answers on exactly comparing apples to apples. So, so let us do that and we'll, we'll bring it back to you.
Usually in budget discussions, Mr. Banks is the first one out the gate. You've sat here patiently. Mr. Banks, weigh in on this subject, please, sir.
Well, I thought I'd let somebody else ask, ask my questions before I got to it, but nobody did. I want to make one thing for some clarification. You mentioned that school nurses would be on the step increases. Is that all nurses now that will get step increases?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
These are, these are the school nurses and they will get a step increase, 2% step increase every other year.
These, these are the nurses that formerly did not get step increases.
You are correct, sir.
So now they're getting, they'll be on the step schedule.
You are correct.
And that will be permanent?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Another question I've got is containing FY '19 and the FY 2020 budget allocations for teachers. Since Mr. Superintendent alluded to teach, I would be curious to know if we know how many teachers were in the actual budget for FY '19 versus FY 20.
So the revised budget for teachers was 7,291 and the proposed budget for teachers, and this is specific teachers, is 7,375. So it's an 84 net increase. I know there's, we said 90, but when we redo the allotments every year, it's based on class sizes and things can vary a little bit.
So are you saying that our actual teacher base grew by 90 from FY '19 to current budget? That's the growth?
We added 90.
Additional.
Additional teacher pool for the 2020 budget over 2019.
Okay. Now, do you know the exact number of teachers that we have in FY '19?
Yes. Well, I know the budgeted number.
Okay. You already stated the budget number. Do we know what the actual numbers of, of teachers were actually hired in 2019?
I'd have to get that for you.
Okay, I think that's all I need to know. Hey, Mr. Johnson, thank you for a very well-prepared presentation. I think it's very understandable and the ability to, for this board to approve a salary increase for our teachers and our employees speaks very loud. And I think, like somebody mentioned earlier, there's a lot of teachers out there watching this board meeting right now that have now, are a little happier than they were this morning. So thank all the people in the Budget Department and if they're here, will you recognize them as to what their functions were?
Yes, so we have Mandy Wissing, who's our deputy CFO.
Could they come forward?
They can come on up here. Come on down.
Because I know you're good, but you're not that good.
Yeah, they, they do all the work. So I have Mandy Wissing, who's our deputy CFO. I have David Baker, who's our new budget director. And I have Becky Beck, who's a budget manager. And they do a lot of work and, and actually, I'd like to recognize the staff under them because there are clerical folks and they do an awful lot of work, too. So it's, it's a lot.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Were we able to increase our maintenance budget at all? Because I know with our aging schools like Campbell and what we can do with SPOS, it's not exactly meeting our needs, I don't think.
The maintenance budget was increased for the number of custodians based on square footage. I'm thinking that operations is probably constant. I'm trying to recall.
Also, with the bus drivers and the new pay schedule, is there any way we can get feedback from them on how that's going? Just kind of a check-in after it's been going off for a while?
We did meet with a, a group of bus drivers as far as vetting this proposal, this spread approach that we talked about. And it, I'll have to defer to the superintendent on how we want to proceed with feedback from that.
Yeah, I mean, as I mentioned, I, I think this next year is going to be, you know, the, the test, if you will. We'll, we'll implement it and see, you know, what we get as far as feedback. You know, we've not done something like, you know, a vote, if you will. But, you know, we, we heard pretty loudly the concern from, from the bus drivers that came to speak of public comments. So if that is reversed, we certainly will, you know, will let the board know and that kind of thing. But pending, pending, you know, a huge reversal, I think this is probably the best, the best solution. But we, but we will still use this next fiscal year to, to kind of analyze exactly how it's going. So it's not set in stone yet.
Okay, Dr. Howard.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited about the budget, so I appreciate the presentation. A couple of questions, though. A lot of teachers that we talked to and a lot of research suggests that money is one thing, but also the environment matters. And it seems that as we continuously dealing with behavior, sometimes dealing with the challenges that come with kids with special needs, the challenges that comes with poverty as we still have a, a huge population of kids who are considered in, in poverty. And that comes with a lot of other issues and that affect academic achievement. And I'm wondering, does this budget reflect any adjustment to try to, like targeted adjustment to address that? I'm just thinking out loud, maybe increasing our number of social workers, counselors, just things that could help our teachers, free them up to do more teaching and less classroom management or management of personal lives.
So the, the quick answer to that question is there are no net new positions that's added except for teacher position we have identified. We do get allotments from the state based on ratios for counselors, for example. There's been a lot of discussion around mental health issues as it relates to school safety and the important role that school counselors play in that regard. But nothing was done this year to, to address any of that. We have not addressed anything as far as numbers of any employees. We, we have, and I'll ask John Adams to, to bring this information about the exit surveys that, that we have done. And it was quite, and to your point, money is not everything, but, but we do want to know when people are leaving the district, when people are leaving education, when people are leaving one school to go to the next, what, what those reasons are. And I, I think that information is, is very significant to this discussion as well. So John, bring that.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Morgan, you ready for some good news compared to our district, our metro Atlanta peers? So, and y'all referenced a, a number earlier and, and it's 44% is, is the most often quoted figure from a recent state study that 44% of teachers in Georgia leave the first five years. And of course, we wanted to see in Cobb exactly what the situation is in Cobb, so we, we did something radical and asked them. We asked our, our teachers who had transferred, for example, within Cobb and also were reinstituting exit interviews in Cobb, which Cobb hasn't done for a while. If someone's going to leave Cobb County, I would like to know why. That could be very useful data. But I have some good news for you. When you compare Cobb to the Big Six districts in Georgia, we have the highest teacher retention rate of those Big Six districts. Frankly, almost, phrase it differently, there are, there are major metro area districts that have twice the attrition that we do. And we have the highest of the Big Six of retention, the, the good number. And then similarly, we have a, the lowest percentage of our teachers among those who are leaving, we have the lowest percentage who are going to other districts. So we do the best of all the Big Six at retaining teachers. And of those who are leaving, they're not leaving to go to other districts. They're, they're leaving education, which is a different problem, but we are not hemorrhaging teachers to other school districts.
What was the number, though, about the reason they were leaving? Because I think this, this addresses some of what Dr. Howard was talking about.
The most commonly cited explanation we get for teachers leaving a specific school is to get closer to home. It's mainly commute times is the reason people leave. Now, leaving education, which is a different survey, that is a different topic, but the numbers that typically have been cited there in a variety of surveys are things like too much testing, which Cobb is leading the way at trying to fix, and lack of autonomy and things extraneous to the classroom. Money matters, but we're doing something about that, too.
But what was the number specifically towards salary, though? I thought it was pretty high.
I don't know which number you mean, I'm sorry.
I, I thought at one point in time, the, the people leaving, that 60% was, was for money.
They do, money matters. Money is not everything. Money matters. And that is typically one of the top three considerations for people leaving education. But they're not leaving Cobb to go to another school district because of money, because we pay well. And then it's not just money, it's also total compensation, which includes benefits, et cetera. But there's also something what I call an intangible. And it's, it's whether you feel like you're valued as an employee and whether you feel like your organization is on the right path. In Cobb, we know from, from the transfer and exit interview data and from the stay interviews, because we ask principals to do stay interviews as well with their, with their key folks. We know that the vast majority of our teachers believe in our mission, know that we're on the right path under the superintendent and believe in what we're doing.
So just to be more specific, money matters, but it's not everything. And because money matters, we were intentional about having a significant line item in the budget to address that. Like very significant, a 40, a $74 million. And that's how intentional we were about that. But there are other factors that are harder to put a finger on. And what I'm asking is that I, I don't think we, I see intention reflected in the budget. And even if we don't know exactly what it is, I think it would be wise to maybe even line item some flexibility to address these things. We may find out in our research as we talk to our, as our principals and our teachers that perhaps it is that we need more support. Maybe it's just an extra person answering the phones upfront. Maybe it's an extra person, a social worker, maybe it's a counselor. If we don't know, we don't know how to place our money. So, you know, the budget kind of reflects our priorities. We all know that. And we've done a great job addressing a huge issue, which is to make sure pay is, is increased. But as we do it, we don't want to do it in an unbalanced way where we are seemingly ignoring other things that matter a lot, which comes to support for our teachers in that sense when it comes to mental health for our students. We are in a digital age and our kids are more stressed out and dealing with anxiety more now than ever. Our budget in, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not reflect an intention to address it. So before we finalize this budget next month, I would love for us to have some line item that can address those, maybe harder to identify areas, and maybe we can talk more about it in executive session. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to have to disagree with you because what we have been very intentional on is identifying the greatest asset of our district, which is every single employee. And we have employees that are charged with those exact things you just identified. So the, also the flip side of that is to take away anything or to add a line item to say, we're going to identify this for this money for this particular purpose is taking something away from the raise to provide to the employees. And, and my recommendation is going to stand that, that our tip-top priority is to make sure we have the best employee in every single position that, that we can possibly fund. When we talk about, just on the teachers, when we talk about the teachers, the top pay being the, the 10-year with the masters, we have to maintain a competitiveness because Mr. Morgan pointed out about us being seven. Seven out of what? Well, when you look at the seven out of the metro, that's pretty close to the bottom. So we, we have to move up. Not, not at all diminishing the, the importance of mental health and, and all of the factors you said, because each school has a different level of importance in, in that, not importance, but a different level of need. So, and it's kind of like the, the argument that we had to, to overcome a few years back after the economy started recovering. And the argument was, oh, well, we're X number of teachers down since the economy tank. We need to start adding teachers back. I disagree with that because I think that the investment needs to be made in the teachers that we have. Now, I'm not saying we need to have class sizes of 65 kids in there, okay? But what I'm saying is, as long as we have manageable class sizes, we don't need just to add numbers to the teacher ranks to add numbers to teachers so that we can get back to some level that we were at at a previous year. I think we need to invest in the great teachers that we have because of the job that they're doing. Because just because you're adding new teachers doesn't mean you're adding new quality teachers. And so I apply that to, to this as well. Our social workers do an awesome job and, and that's why when we do raises, we do them across the board. So everybody that's on a pay scale of any type, they're getting 8% plus, whatever that pay scale is. So I, and I said I disagree because I think we have identified exactly what you just said, we just not line itemed it out. When you look at every single group of employees we have, whether it be bus drivers that see our students first and last on a day, whether it be our resource officers that are in the schools that play such a critical role in, in school safety, our substitutes that we know the pay is different between districts in that regard as well. I think that what we're saying by saying the 8 to 12.6% raise range is that we count every single team member a vital team member on our team. So that when you get into things that counselors are having to address, I mean, and I, I speak to the counselors group every year, and one of the things I always say to them is, you know, everybody else's worst day is your every day. Those counselors deal with things that, you know, it's just, to, to your point, things have changed for our students today. Do we need more counselors? Absolutely, we need more counselors. But until, you know, we are, we are allotted counselors based on a ratio and we, we go above and beyond on some of the ratios that the state provide. But again, I think the, the important factor in this budget is that two focuses, one primary focus is every employee. The other one is additional allotments to be able to provide for those situations that are different in schools, whether it be special needs, which we, you know, identified that they're going to take a, a large chunk of those allotments. Or whether it be, you know, for class size or whether it be for a special class that's needed at a school. That's what those allotments do. So I, I think we definitely have what you brought up covered in every way fathomable.
So we, we don't disagree in, in general. I think maybe I'm kind of looking at best-case scenario, just so everyone kind of knows where we're going. It's, it was commonly known that we wanted to do better by our employees to increase their salaries. And when the opportunity provided itself with, with our revenues increasing, that's, that's something that we did. And, and I applaud you for making that a priority. I guess what I'm looking at is having a, a vision of... I guess what I'm looking at is having a vision of what would be some of the next priorities. Because if it's not on this budget, perhaps, looking into the future, it'll be nice to kind of know where are there some voids? You know, where are there some voids that we can, you know, really target? Just as intentional as we did for the salaries, maybe this is not the year to do it. But it's nice to kind of know where we're going as a school district. And I'm bringing up mental health as an example, just to kind of have that vision, knowing where our society is going. Perhaps we should, as a team, with the superintendent, you and us as a board, can kind of look forward and say, hey, you know, if next year we find out that we still have a little more room to work with, this might need to be our next thing, you know, to kind of focus on that. So that's really why I'm bringing this up. I understand we're not gonna be able to do everything right now. And when people see a budget, though, what about this? What about that? I mean, I know that conversation can get frustrating. But I think it's good to have some vision on knowing where our society is going and not be reactive, but be proactive and say, hey, we plan for this, and the money's there, let's do it. Let's make sure we have more support systems in place. And if we can't do it, maybe we can set aside some money to work with outside groups and increase our grants and things of that nature. Thank you.
Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. We heard that we are coming one as far as the number of teachers that have master's degree, and then we also have teachers that have doctor's degrees. What do we do to help our teachers who have not gotten to that level, to get to that level? Can somebody explain that?
First thing we do is we encourage them by paying them more. If you go back and get a master's degree, that's roughly a 13% increase in your pay overnight. So that's the first thing we do. We provide them an incentive, and that's built into not only our salary structure and also the state's salary structure, but we also have a lot of professional development. The folks in teaching and learning who really lead the way in professional development do a fantastic job of providing a variety of opportunities for teachers to grow, and they, of course, encourage them to get advanced degrees. But it's not just about advanced degrees. They offer a bunch of opportunities for people to get additional training in other areas. Micro certifications is something that's very hot right now for good reason. And then we have a number of academies. We have, at last count, seven or eight academies. There is a teacher leadership academy that Jennifer's folks run. And then we have, I believe, seven different leadership academies, anywhere from someone who's remotely thinking about becoming a leader one day to veteran principals who are looking to continually sharpen the saw. So, the short answer to your question is, we encourage them to go back and get those advanced degrees or additional professional learning. We pay, in the case of those advanced degrees, and then we offer a number of pathways for people to grow individually and also help with the organization's succession plan.
Okay. Thank you. Can you tell us an estimate of how many teachers we will lose this year and how many we will have to hire for next year?
I can, Mr. Banks. And I appreciate you asking that question, and I was looking forward to you doing that. Because you're usually the one that asks me that every year. And happy birthday, by the way, belatedly.
Thank you.
We anticipate that our teacher attrition will be about, this year, about what it was like last year, 750 to 800 teachers. We've already hired, as of this morning, we've already hired 460 teachers for next year. So we're actually ahead of the curve in terms of getting folks hired for next year. So we're in a good place right now. We will be fully staffed by June 17th, well in advance of the first day of school, barring any last-minute departures. And our goal is to not only just fill the spots, but fill them with the best people who have realized that Cobb is indeed the best place to teach, lead, and learn.
So, we've got a little over 300 more teachers to hire for next year. How are we, what's our plans to hire those teachers?
And it starts in January. We have a recruiting team of about 40 trained teachers and administrators, and they've already been to 34 locations around the country to recruit teachers. I will respectfully remind the board that five years ago, we didn't have a recruiting budget or a recruiting team. So, under Mr. Rags' leadership, we've made tremendous strides in that area as we need to do. That's very strategic and intentional. So it started in January, we've been to 45 locations, a variety around the country, including historically black colleges, looking for all groups, the best people we can find. And we hire aggressively. In prior years, we have two very large job fairs. Some of y'all have attended our job fairs. We have over 2,000 people attend our job fairs, coming from as far away as Texas and North Carolina. In prior years, we'll hire a couple at each job fair. This past year, we hired 20 on the spot. You can teach physics, references are good, sign right here, come to Cobb, we need you. I'm trying to recruit Dr. Howard, if he decides he wants to hang out the dental practice, because I know he majored in chemistry, if I recall correctly. So we're a lot more aggressive than we used to be, and we have to have goals along the way. I have internal goals for my people, and I coordinate with Sherry's good folks, because ultimately, our principals do the hiring, not HR. And so we have to make sure their principals are equipped and that they're meeting those target goals along the way. And the good news is that this year, they really are.
To change the subject a little bit, but still, on teachers. Can someone explain our status of our online teaching courses that we offer? How well-attended are all these courses? And how many teachers are involved in these online courses?
Good afternoon, Mr. Banks. CVA is our online academy, which houses our digital content, as you just described it. We have approximately 130 teachers who are part of CVA, serving over 3,000 students, over 35 courses.
Are these just high school courses?
They are.
Okay. And how many students participate? Do you know?
Just over 3,000 currently. Interestingly, CVA has seen exponential growth since its inception 18 years ago. Trivia is typically Mr. Adams' specialty when presenting to the board, but as a fun fact, CVA, to our knowledge, is the oldest digital academy inside the state of Georgia. And it has grown from two, a couple hundred, when it was first created back in the early 2000s, to now just over 3,000. Over the course of the last five years, it has grown by almost 15% per year. So good product, delivered to the market, the market likes it. And the market right now is just Cobb students. We look forward to opportunities to provide that solution to maybe others. You might be hearing something about that relatively soon.
Do we allow students to participate in the online teaching versus having to be in the school itself? Because at one time, I think we had the, it was mandatory, they'd do it at the school, but it was online. Can they now participate at home at that leisure?
Yes and no. Yes during the summer for tuition students. That means if a student would like to take a course and pay, or parent pay, then yes, they're certainly able to do that from home. If a student takes CVA during the school day in replacement of a "traditional" class, then that is done on campus, inside of a CVA lab, which is part of every high school in the county.
Okay. Now, I understand PE and health is a big factor in students that are in the fine arts or some other discipline, that they have to have some additional credits, and they get the PE and they get their health online. Is that a big area of participation?
It is. Health is our arguably most popular course. As part of that course, it's actually one of the most probably attractive features about it, is many of the health requirements can be done at home. In fact, we had an issue recently brought to bear, where we have a CVA student who's part of the Atlanta United soccer team. And we were able to make accommodations for that student to complete their requirements through equipment strapped to their body as they're on the practice field to make those determinations of physical fitness. It seemed pretty intuitive, part of Atlanta United, but the answer to your question is yes. It's one of our most popular courses.
Now, is the online, is that under your purview, or is that under Ms. Lawson's?
It is. It's under mine.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Scamhorn.
I'm awake.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to go back to something that the superintendent was explaining. I guess it's gonna be somewhat complimentary. As far as adding the line items to do certain things, is, I would be very reluctant, as a board member, to vote for some line item things, because what we, I think we've done, and Mr. Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, is we've given our principals autonomy to make certain decisions, so they know what is needed in their communities. Is that correct?
And we also provide certain resources dependent upon the school's need, which is different than any other school.
Yeah. So, if you pin down a countywide allotment or requirement, some of that, if not a lot of it, would be wasted in certain, depending on the requirement. Correct?
Well, it's kind of difficult to say. I mean, I see what you're saying. If you said, thou shalt this line item for X number of dollars, and you can only do it for that, then that takes away the autonomy that we already have built into the school's budget, is they get that.
Yeah. I would prefer, and I believe my constituents would too, that we proceed on the path that we've been on, where we get the best-trained people at all levels, particularly at the principal administrative level, particularly at our executive level. We pay these folks a lot of money to make decisions on personnel that go down into our schools to primarily educate our students from K through 12. So, that's where I would like to see the flexibility as far as our budget is to, so that Ms. Hill can move people where she needs them, not where some, a dictate may require her to send someone or do something that she doesn't want. So, I'd like to drive that home. Then, to go back, if we can get back on a little more to the budget, on the fair share, you went over that, and you were clear, but I felt like it was a little too brief, maybe for us, our public. And you said it increased our fair share, which is a contribution, for lack of a better, or payment increased, how many millions?
Six.
$6 million. Could you explain again what it is and why it is the fair share again?
Yeah, a better way to say it is the deduction increased. Is that a better way to say it? They're deducting, instead of deducting 155 million, they'll be deducting 161 million from state earnings.
Where does that money go?
Well, the QBE formula is a formula from the state. And everybody, all K to 12 public school districts have to have or participate in the QBE program. But to receive state funding, I guess the best way I could put it is to receive state funding.
Nah, I'm gonna jump in. That's not what he's asking. He wants to know where the money goes. And it's my understanding, okay? Now, I don't have this in writing, signed affidavit kind of thing, but it's my understanding that the money just goes into the general fund of the state, that it doesn't have to be used for education. It can be used for anything. Now, to Brad's point, the QBE formula does dictate how school districts and how much school districts receive. But the local fair share is, it's not a formula that says, okay, local fair share will take out X, and X is determined by the number of school districts and the allotments and the FTE, such that X fully funds QBE for every school district in the state. It's my understanding that, and I stand to be corrected if I'm incorrect, so please, you know, phone a friend. But it's my understanding that that money that's withheld just goes into the general fund.
There you go. Okay. Then, finally, one other comment that, as far as where the budget goes, we're such a large system, and it comes back to our getting the right people in the right spot. It always, I'm always fascinated, for lack of a better word, why some schools have better X, be it a baseball field or something else, and other schools don't. When, at the district level, we try to be as even as possible of getting everybody what they need in qualifications, in allotments, and those kind of things. Then, I'll leave that at that. But, and then finally, Mr. Chair, come back around to what I want to compliment our staff. The reason why I believe, my humble opinion, that we have the lowest per pupil expenditures, if not, or one of the lowest, are we second from the lowest or the lowest?
For administrator.
Yeah.
I think we're lowest.
In the metropolitan area, we're the lowest. When compared with our large metro peers, we are the lowest central administrative costs by a significant margin.
Okay. Well, what I'm driving at is, the reason why we're the lowest, the reason why we have great leadership, the reason why we can make choices that other school districts can't, is because of the people that are in this room. Because the superintendent hires the best people that can do an efficient job, and they hire the best principals and people that can do the best job. That's how we get better. And money is a driving force. But I maintain environment and work environment is also a very important force. So, with that, unless you have, and thank you for an excellent report, Mr. Johnson, but unless you have further comments, I'll yield back.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, thank you.
May I say something? All right. I'm gonna guess that this is gonna end up being on the discussion agenda for tonight. So, I think if, I'd like to see us get out of here by 4:00 PM, because we have executive session stuff to do. So, you know, we could have a few more questions addressed this evening, if that's okay. I, you know. All right. Mr. Scamhorn.
No.
Mr. Morgan. I'm sorry.
Mr. Morgan. I know, because you always sit together.
There you go. I appreciate it. Is there, when you were talking about the different opportunities for professional development, John, are there the academies and, are there pathways for a teacher to increase his or her pay without additional certifications or degrees? And the reason I ask is this. Let's say I come in, I'm a first, second-year teacher, right? And, you know, we are, with the proposed budget, we are, but let's just say, I might not necessarily have the money to, and grad school's expensive. But are there opportunities that if I show my worth and my value to a school, that I don't necessarily, I'm not saying this is everyone's reality, go into debt or getting a master's degree or whatever it might be, to earn extra money, earn extra money as a teacher? Are there pathways set forth that teachers can pursue that you don't have to, you know, say, okay, I went and got this master's degree or whatever? Because, transparency moment, I have, I know many a teachers who say, I went and got that, but it didn't add a whole lot to my repertoire in terms of being an effective teacher. I just did it because that's what the rules are. Are there pathways that we currently have? because that's what the rules are. Are there pathways that we currently have that would allow a teacher to do that?
And the bulk of ways for a teacher to increase their pay, the bulk of those are going to either be through additional training or experience, or going to be through additional responsibility, which is sometimes married to additional training. For example, the vast majority of our assistant principals have a master's degree typically in ed leadership or in something else, and they pass the GACE in ed leadership. So, generally, they have to do, go back and get an advanced degree or some sort of increase in their responsibility. Once they've got their master's degree, if they're in administration, they don't necessarily have to have a doctorate to go any higher. Mr. Ragdale is a big believer in the person doing the job regardless of their degree. So, we live, we're in an organization that thinks it's the person and the job and not the degree. There are some opportunities for additional supplements. You've touched on those, and that's regardless of degree or experience. That would be additional responsibility. If someone's a new teacher but is the right person to be the department chair of the history department at Alatoon High School, they can have that job for additional pay. The big pay differential, though, for teachers in education, and this is pretty much the same everywhere, is to go into administration. Now, be careful what you wish for. I've done the analysis, and the big, the big jump in pay when you go from teacher to administrator is because you work extra days. It's not an additional increase per day. With apologies to the Army, school administration is the toughest job you'll ever love. But to answer your question, the bulk of it is to go into administration or do additional things. But Ms. Lawson has her Teacher Leader Academy and some additional professional learning academies that will make them more effective employees and better leaders as they remain in the classroom, but not tied to pay specifically.
Okay. Well, I think that's another conversation for another day, because I just think that if you, it shouldn't be, the biggest return on investment doesn't, shouldn't necessarily be that. I think there should be other options to have opportunities to increase your pay. Other question I have is, I feel like I remember recently shaking the hands of counselors of the year, social workers of the year. Was that, how does that work in our school district? Because I want to go back to something that Dr. Howard said about mental health. I would suspect because there are not nearly as many counselors in a school as a teacher, that it's a one or two, like maybe three, four people. How many councils of the year do we have in the district? I feel like we were just shaking somebody's hands a couple months ago. Does anyone know, and social work, social workers, anyone know how many of those people we award a year?
I work with counselors, and I know Dr. Daniel works with social workers. I can't tell you off the top of my head what the number is right this minute of what we have employed. I do know, for example, there's accounts, a local Cobb Marietta Counseling Association who votes on counselor of the year, but you can also have a school recognize a counselor. So, there are different avenues for how they're selected, but I don't know off the top of my head, but I can get that.
The, where I'm going with this is this. I feel like we've done an excellent job when it comes to teacher of the year. I always get the other verbiage mixed up. Classified employee. Why not, in this particular budget, why not also add that for counselors who's dealing with mental health, social workers who, Chris said that the average, I guess the teacher's worst day is what the counselor is dealing with every day. And I suspect that it would not be a lot of cost associated with that because we're not, we're not talking about a lot of people. But I do think that when we do think about educating the entire child, the work that the counselor, counselors are constantly doing, and what the social workers are constantly doing, I do think that if there's a way to also add a stipend to those three or four or five or however many people, I don't suspect there's a lot of people, then I also think that would be an additional way to continue the momentum of putting people first in our school district in terms of pay. So, that's something that I also, I gotta know how I formally bring that, or do I need to? Yeah, okay. Yeah, bring it back to me.
And Mr. Morgan, in case I wasn't clear, they're eligible with the general teacher of the year that you would be familiar with, that we celebrate typically at Roswell Street Baptist. So, while it's teacher of the year, it's a certified position. So, when you're asking a district counselor of the year, you've seen some emails, I think, in the last week or two. Those are nominations that come from an association, not necessarily the Cobb County School District, but we do have counselors at local schools.
That's a good point. I'm glad you said that because I was totally missing that. And to that point, last year, or I can't remember, one year at Vaughn, it was the technology lab teacher that was the teacher of the year. So, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, too.
I know. Mr. Morgan is finished. All right. Ms. Davis?
Thank you very much. So, I think it's important that we clear up the fair share picture because right now, it seems as if our money is being sent out around the state. And as presented in this budget, half of our money is coming from property taxes and half is coming from the QBE formula, roughly half and half. And so, 100% of our property taxes that we collect here in Cobb County are going towards Cobb County schools. Is that correct, Brad? Okay. Thank you. So, and then with the QBE formula, each county has to basically put up five mils of what they collect. So, in Cobb County, five mils looks a lot different than in Troup County or any other county. So, that's why we're, we're looked at as a, I've heard that donor county. Is that correct? So, I just think we need to be careful of how we present that to the public, because a lot of people just sound like our money is being spread out across the state. That's not really directed at you, Brad.
Well, to some, and I hear what you're saying because I've had to clear up this misperception so much about local fair share, because it's not like our tax dollars are being contributed to a pot and then they're going. It's actually the reverse. Our tax dollars are being withheld, not our county property tax, but state tax dollars are being withheld from us to be used for, and that was the point I was trying to make. I'm pretty sure I'm accurate, but I'm not going to, you know, swear on a stack of bibles on that statement, but that the local fair share of money goes into a pot in the general fund and can be used on anything, because I've chased this rabbit before.
But, but just to be clear, it is exported at the end of the day. The way they account for it is they, they take it out of what they're going to give you.
That's correct.
But I think to clarify, we don't get all the property taxes collected in Cobb, I do not believe, goes to Cobb.
Gotcha. Well, the, and to that point, so that's why on our legislative priorities every year, we still try to get across the fact that we're kind of double taxed on the local fair share, because we're not contributing the equivalent of five mils. We're contributing the equivalent of six and a half mils. So, we try to get the, we could try to get the legislature to address that. But to Clem's point, we do need to clarify, rock solid in black and white, exactly what money we give from that perspective.
I think the state may like to say that, well, we don't take the money and export it, but if we just do the simple math, that's exactly what they do.
Exactly. So, Clem just gave you the black and white facts. What I gave you was is the cleaned up version that politicians like to say, because when people started getting upriled in Cobb, saying that our tax dollars were going to other counties to fund this and that and the other, to fund education, the answer, well, wait a minute, no, 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 that's not true. Well, to a degree, that's correct, because it doesn't have to go to fund education. So, the, and, you know, I don't want to get into, this is our budget, and that's kind of like the state budget, but when we're having to have deducted over $160 million, you know, that, and it's not gone down. I don't, has there ever been a year when local fair share has gone down?
No.
No. So...
And if I could add another point, too, I don't, I don't think that the district has, or at least not everyone at the district, has just taken on the entire concept of the reason to do that. There are districts that would have a hard time funding themselves through other means. I think the point has been establishing limits on the concept of the five mil, which is more like a six point something mil, I think the last time that was checked. So, anyway, I just wanted to add that clarification.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I can add some clarification to this also. The five mils is based on the assessed values, like our village for our property taxes, same thing. So, it's the five mils on a statewide basis. Now, that doesn't take into account is every school district assessed value the same, which is supposed to be, by law is supposed to be. That doesn't necessarily mean it is. And also, there are some districts that do not maximize their millage rate that do get QBE money over the above the five mils share.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Banks. To my fellow board members, I would encourage you, the next time you have board training, if you have an opportunity to go sit in the class on education funding, I think you'll find it enlightening. That's what I did last December. I won't take up a lot of time talking about it, but we are unique in the fact that we get a goose egg zero when it comes to this whole five mil fair share thing, and we are perceived by the rest of the state as things that we've talked about, special needs, reading remediation, all the things we do. In other parts of the state, these are considered luxuries, but we've got 112,000 kids we're trying to look out for. And the example that they used in the training, and I don't have the formula, I shared it with Mr. Floresta right after the session, was participants in the room were given their numbers on how the formula is done, and everybody in the room saw how their QB is calculated, and then the instructor said, where's my man from Cobb County? He said, did your formula come out? And I said, he says, it's just about the same. I said, no, my number's bigger than yours. He's, what? I said, my zero is a whole lot larger. But I was the only one in the room that was in a county that had zero coming back. And the example they used at the bottom of the worksheet to see how it works was Gwinnett County, who last year got $80 million back. So, it is something we ought to keep talking about. We don't want to be combative about it, but I would summarize it by saying, right now, five mil fair share is based on total property tax value times a number gives you your five mil. What I would like to see is total property tax value minus your exemptions, and while I'm talking about, maybe even minus abatements, and then take that number that remains and multiply it by that. But that will be a legislative discussion that I don't know if we'll ever get to it. And that would equate to approximately $28 million more from state funding for Cobb County, if they did your formula you just said.
But what are they going to do about it? Like, we are talking in circles, but it sounds like we just need to put something very clear on paper and send it to state legislators, but we get very, we back off when it, I know we talk about it and we're very polite about it, but if, this is a big deal, and I know that we, I know we're going to break, but if it's that significant, as a whole county, we should just make it very clear and be very persistent into our state legislators that we have to make some changes.
Education's the beginning.
That's all I'm saying.
All right. Yeah, last statement is that, and that's why the local fair share has been and will continue to be a legislative priority for this school district, assuming the board approves those, because it's the board's legislative priorities. But that's the reason, because it is that important. We've just never got any traction on it.
That's right. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and say it just for fun. Consent agenda? I didn't think so. All right.
Wait, no objections?
Wait, discussion or consent? Discussion. All right, discussion. All right. Now, we have the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, pause, look around. All right. Our agenda is approved. Now, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, legal, and land. Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we recess to executive session to discuss personnel, land, and legal.
Thank you. Mr. Wheeler is the second. All right. We must vote. All those in favor of taking a break, go into executive session, raise your hand. All right. That's 7-0. So, we are in recess until 6:30, when we have our public budget discussion. Thank you.
Thanks for helping, John.